All right, have your attention please. We're gonna get the meeting started. Have your attention. Thank you. Welcome to the Town of New Paltz Planning Board Meeting of May 27th, 2015. If you are here to speak at the public hearing, we have a sign up list on the side. Please fill your name in and address so we know who and what. We have a stenographer here who will transcribe the public hearing. And so it's necessary for you to speak clearly, state your name if you actually spell it. Please do that and we'll conduct that when we get to that stage on the agenda. So, meeting of Town of New Paltz Planning Board, May 27th, 2005. First order up is...
Fifteen.
Excuse me?
Two thousand fifteen.
Fifteen. Yeah, I got fifteen, five, it was a good five. Maybe it had to work. Review and approval of minutes. We have up to May 11th, 2015, minutes. I have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Peter, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is the public hearing on Trans Hudson Management, CVS, Quik corners Road. Have a motion to open up the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, I'll, Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, I'm gonna call up the names and I'll probably butcher your names, so I'll apologize upfront for screwing it up, but bear with me. The podium's up on the left. When you're giving your talk, camera's over there, the board's over here, and the audience is in front of you. So it's kind of a, which one do I cater to? Just speak loudly, the board will certainly hear it, and the audience needs to hear it too. And I'm gonna hold you to five minutes. We have a lot of people that'd like to speak, but I would like to get through everybody. And so at about four and a half minutes, I'm gonna start waving my hands at you to get your attention to finish up. Okay? With that, let's begin with Lauren.
Lauren Aiden Kohler.
Aiden Kohler?
Oh, Aiden, A-I-D-A-N, Kohler, K-O-E-H-L-E-R.
That's me.
Oh. I don't know. We should not allow for the development of CVS in New Paltz. There is no need and there is no payoff, as far as I can see. When New Paltz allows for development, it should be because there is a specific need and a wonderful payoff. It should be because our community and hopefully society would benefit from such development. If someone, if an organization were to come along and wanted to build something like more student housing that doubled as senior living, so that there was intergenerational socializing and better communication within our community, that would be something great to approve. If there was a bike-pedaled compost pickup, I mean, how to build a facility for the compost, that would be a great thing to approve. It would be better for the environment and better for people's health. If someone was going to mindfully expand public transportation, that would be a great thing to approve, as long as it was respectful of neighbors where it was expanding. And all of these are examples that other communities, other cities are adopting. They're giving their resources, their space to organizations, to people who are inspiring innovation, who are bettering the community through communication, through health. There's fundamental measurable quality of life that can be seen through these developments. And that's what, that's the type of developments that should happen in New Paltz. I don't see what CVS it gives us in that way. CVS, to me, another pharmacy, another large organization that's gonna pay people, actually I don't know what they're gonna pay them, but as far as I know, it's probably not the best living way. I don't see how they're gonna inspire innovation or inspire anything wonderful in our community. And that's what development, that's what new development should allow for in New Paltz. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich? There you are. Excuse me?
Well, preserving that's another call.
Yeah, this is just on CVS.
Can I talk to the next one there?
Certainly can.
Will he could talk in the public comment?
Joel Oppenheimer?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this time. I'm looking towards the future, and I don't see CVS as something that is really gonna be benefiting our communities for the long-term future. I see us, I see wanting to invest in the existing businesses that we have in the town of New Paltz. And I would like to, our elected officials and our volunteers, to really look at spaces that create something more innovative for the future. But I think that the public comments should continue throughout this process, and the public should continue to be able to be involved in this process of creating space in the town of New Paltz that again is innovative, unique, and really adds something to our community. I do not see any need for another drug provider in this country at all. I've been working in addiction services for many, many years, and I don't know if any of you are following what's going on in upstate New York and all over, but there's tremendous, tremendous abuse of prescription medications at this time, all over the state, causing huge swell in addictions, causing a lot of illegal activity around prescription drug use and abuse and addiction, and adding another very, very large provider that has a lot of difficulty managing prescriptions. You're basically really providing a very, very scary influx of a lot of prescription medication that has a lot of risks to our community. And I think we really, really need to take a look at that. We already have three existing, that I know of, prescription providers very close by. And again, I haven't seen or been, it hasn't been explained to me, a real need for this in our community, when we can look to the existing businesses and improve their economy and improve our economy by working with existing businesses. And again, I don't think we need another large parking lot and trees removed and other potential environmental hazards to come in to our community. Did you need my name?
Joel.
Joel Oppenheimer.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Thanks. I'm smaller than everybody else.
No, Ben.
I'm a closed door. Lickstein, Easenboy, L-I-C-K-S-T-E-I-N. I'm just gonna touch on, I'm not gonna read my whole four-page letter, because I don't think you'll let me, but I wanna touch on a few key points about the application itself and the current review process that I think raise significant concerns. The first is that the public was given all of six days, three of which were over a holiday weekend, to review a forty-four-page document, a response document by the applicant. And that's not enough time. I'm a design professional, I've been an urban community planner for twenty-six years. I can do it, but I don't expect nearly anybody else in this room, possible exception of those of you sitting at the table, pardon me, to be able to do that. So it's really imperative that the public hearing remain open, so that citizens are given a reasonable amount of time to review and comment on information provided by the applicant. And it's also essential that the public hearing remain open throughout the secret process, given the sensitive location of the subject property, and the scale and the design of the project. I did watch, listen to the prior meeting, and it appears that the applicant's approach is that because the use is permitted, and because the site largely complies with zoning, then environmental impacts and site plan operational issues are essentially moot. And I wanna remind the planning board and the public that this is not the case. It's actually not how the process works in New York. The planning board, as you know, has a responsibility to carefully consider and review environmental impacts and to thoroughly understand site-related issues to mitigate impacts of concern. To date, with the exception of traffic engineering review and civil engineering review, the planning board has no experts analyzing broader impacts related to regional accessibility...
Hold on.
...broader impacts. ...related to regional accessibility, noise, community character, or economic impacts. And once this is built, we're gonna have to live with this for the long term, okay? The applicant will be gone, but we will still be here. And it's therefore very important that despite what appears to be the applicant's push to control the review process, that the planning board retain appropriate experts to provide review and input. And so I urge the planning board to take a long-term and comprehensive view with respect to this large development, and to retain whatever experts you feel are necessary to allow you and the community to fully understand the impacts of the project. I will say in the past, we, when I say we, I'm speaking of the town neighborhoods that are north of around 299, which I refer to as the part of the town that everybody thinks is in the village. Even people running for village office knock on our doors and we say, "Sorry, we're actually in the town, surrounded by the village," though. I wanna say that in the past, you know, and I think it's really been unintended, there have not been detailed analyses required to address issues that significantly affect that part of the town. There were no serious noise impacts or traffic diversion and speeding studies done for Land Farm or Woodland Pond. And the loss of vegetation and some natural vermin, in the former case, the case of Land Farm, and the bouncing of noise off a large blunt structure, in the latter case, have generated noise impacts to a previously quiet neighborhood. The existing grades of vegetation on the proposed CVS site that help now to bucket through throughway noise will be significantly altered by this project. And this cannot and should not be overlooked. I wanna turn to a moment to traffic and cut-through traffic. I wanna say that the left turns out of the proposed CVS, even the applicant has identified and acknowledged that these will be quite difficult during peak hours. And I wanna say that as a result of that, the applicant is proposing a right-turn-out-only opportunity from their site onto North Putt. And because of this right-turn-only lane, the traffic will actually be encouraged to divert to Henry W. Lewis. I can guarantee you this is going to happen. And again, we will then have more cut-through traffic in a residential area, and I strongly encourage not only the removal of the right-turn lane for that reason, but because it will also help to minimize the width of that curb cut. The applicant, in response to a comment by the county, is now proposing to widen that by another five feet, to put it in a median. I think the way to address pedestrian bicycle safety there is to narrow the width of that access driveway, not to keep widening it so a pedestrian can stand in the middle of it, which is what's being proposed. I also wanna remind you that North Putt is an important link in the regional bike and trail network system that's under development within the county, so I think that's another reason to look at traffic and their access configuration as well. And the applicant's desire for a large pharmacy and a more convenient access configuration for its own customers' benefit, they're not nearly as important as impacts to our neighborhood. I wanna talk about community character briefly. It's one of those terms that, you know, makes engineers glad that they didn't become planners like I am, because you can't, you know, measure it with runoff coefficients. But I wanna say that a CVS that is appropriate in size, design, and scale to the city of Kingston is not appropriate here. This is the gateway into the town, and the town and the village are undertaking a planning process to collectively craft a vision for the community. And there's no question that such a vision will not be based on urban or conventionally suburban auto orientation, such as proposed at this site. Even the 1995 master plan has as part of its mission statement, retaining the character of the community while enabling responsible growth. It also has an objective to preserve and enhance the natural beauty and rural quality of life of the community and to protect the small-town atmosphere of the village core. Simply, I don't see any reason for the town to accept the proposed cookie-cutter design, either in terms of building size or scale, in terms of its very bland architecture, the parking in front of a building, the inclusion of a drive-thru. Are you waiting at me?
Yes.
Okay. That adds to previous surface. I could go on and on, but those are just some issues that need greater design attention. I do also urge you to get an economic analysis undertaken by an expert to address some of the concerns that have already been raised, and I won't list the fifteen items that I had identified on the site plan as calling out for my greater clarification. So I just wanna say thank you to the planning board and to all the people who took their time out to be here tonight. I think you see that there's a lot of concern about this reporting.
Thanks, Susan. All right, just bear with me. There'll be people for, people against, just about every application that I have before me that I've run public hearings for. I don't tolerate catcalls, bullying, hissing, and likewise, I don't wanna tolerate applause on the flip side of it, too. So just bear with me, listen to them, give them the credit and respect that they have for coming out and talking about it, but hold refrains from either cheering or bullying. Thank you. Catherine Stewart?
Hello, I'm Catherine Stewart from New Paltz. I actually have three different letters from different humans, but they're short. I think they can be done in five minutes. The first is from me, Catherine Stewart. I've lived and worked in New Paltz for almost twelve years. I first, others have said this, I please, I urge you to keep the public comment open throughout this process. As I talk to other New Paltzians, it's evident that most people here in New Paltz don't even know about this proposal. And when they hear about it, they're shocked, particularly at the site where it's considered. They're shocked that this particular site would even be considered for such usage. It is ill-suited placement for aesthetic, traffic, and logistical reasons. I also urge you to demand a full environmental and traffic analysis before any decisions are made, including a noise study. I know Susan talked about this. I mention the noise because it has been overlooked in the past. Before we purchased our house on Old Mill Road twelve years ago, we stood in the front yard to see if we could hear the throughway. We could, but it was a distant white noise, something we decided we could live with. When the Land Farm development was built, thousands of trees were removed between us and the throughway. Now, the roar of the throughway can be heard as if it's just a random event. In fact, we can hear it inside our house now with the windows closed. Had a noise study been done, undoubtedly, the Land Farm developers would have had to have been required to mitigate this effect, perhaps by removing fewer trees. This CVS project proposes to clearcut all the trees and change the very contours of the land around the throughway in ways that would most certainly bring significantly more throughway noise to a large portion of New Paltz neighborhoods. There is no need for you to hurry this process, and you, as a planning board, have the right to ask for any and all experts to help you collect all the information you need to make a decision that will better our community. I urge you to take that time and to hire those experts, at the expense of the applicant, of course, before any decisions are made. I recently drove past a CVS in Kingston that looks identical to the one proposed for this site. And I will say that even there, in the city, it looked huge and out of scale. We actually had two friends from Miami, and they were like, "Oh, my gosh, that's huge." If it looks huge and out of scale, they're only thinking how it will change the character of our small town. One of our missions, as New Paltzians, one of your missions as the planning board, is to protect the unique nature and character of our town. This project does quite the opposite. Thanks for hearing my thoughts, and thank you for your service. You guys are all volunteers, and it's so much appreciated. Do I have time for one more?
Quick.
Okay, quick. Let's see, which one should I do? Tim Olson. Again, he's thanking you for your work. He is saying here, "The project would put a great deal of stress on an already congested I'll just skip over it. "The nature of the business is not one that serves the vital interests of the community." Let's see, there are other things here. "New Paltz would benefit much more from locally-owned, higher-wage businesses." And this other, I will leave with you as well, for more New Paltz residents. But again, everyone I speak to says, "Right there, on that corner?" But thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Catherine. In case you're not aware, if you do have written comments like that, you can generalize them, but make sure that Kelly gets the copy of the written comments, because she'll send them all to the board members. Okay, Ralph? I figured you were getting up, and it must be.
My name is Ralph Stewart. Lived in New York, in New Paltz for almost eight years. I'm strongly opposed to the CVS proposal for many reasons. Walking is my primary means of transportation. This project, by its location and design, is not pedestrian-friendly. I love New Paltz because it is unique and I enjoy doing business, Petrix Pharmacy and other locally-owned businesses. CVS will only be successful if it takes business away from our current small businesses or attracts more traffic from the throughway.
Oh, hold on, I'm...
Neither one of these options would be a good thing.
Speak slower and louder.
Closer.
Yep.
New Paltz is not a generic town.
Excuse me, sir?
Sarah, hold on.
Would you please just repeat from locally-owned businesses? I didn't hear the last percent.
CVS will only be successful if it takes business away from our current small businesses or if it attracts more traffic than the throughway. Neither one of these options will be a good thing for New Paltz. New Paltz is not a generic town. It is a special, unique place. Placing this huge, generic CVS at the gateway of our charming town is not in keeping with the spirit and character of New Paltz. I urge you to reject this proposal. I urge you to keep keeping public comment open throughout this process. Thank you for all your work for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ralph. Carmen Haas?
Carmen Haas, H.P.S. And is Five Guys also part of this?
Yes.
Never mentioned Five Guys. Our town needs a lot of things. Better sidewalks, bike lanes, a bridge, more housing options. What we don't need...
Just speak into the mic, can't hear you.
There you go.
What we don't need is a fourth drugstore. I don't know anyone that says we need a fourth drugstore, particularly at the gateway to our little town. And as far as Five Guys goes, we have buildings that are empty. We have the diner by the throughway. We have My Hero Pizza. These are standalone buildings with existing parking. We have the ShopRite Plaza. These are all structures that have existing infrastructure, so I don't see why we wanna rip down woods and put up these generic businesses that, I can't really add to anything that, you know, everything's already been said, so I'm very opposed to this, and I hope they consider our comments and keep the lines of communication open. Thank you.
Thank you. Irwin? You all time.
You should, but I'm not here to talk about the CVS.
Okay. We're still, we're, no, we're on a public hearing for CVS.
I'm not here to talk about that.
Okay. Ira?
Thank you. First part of my comment is I'd like to...
Just, Ira, I...
Oh, Ira Margolis. M-A-R-G-O-L-A-S. I would just like to remind the board, this is a town project, not a village project. The benefit, that everybody said there is none, is to the town people. The fact that the village, who doesn't have a tax base, could care less about taxes, it has no effect. I'm not gonna just go into any of the other stuff that I'm not familiar with, you know, environmental, this, that, and the other thing. But I will say this. The town board forces the town taxpayer to subsidize the village because they have no tax base. So all the money goes to the village to do all of these nice little things that all the village people love and are nice, but they don't have to pay for them. And it's easy to do things when you don't have to pay for them. This project, and I'm not gonna take a whole bunch of things, I'm not gonna fail, but from a monetary standpoint, if I was living in the town, I could care less what the village didn't like the idea. Because this will help me by reducing my taxes or offsetting what I'm forced to pay to the village, so that I can live here. You know, I mean, it's nice, you know, you have all of these nice things. But you gotta remember, the village in particular wants to keep business out. They only wanna allow select businesses, people that they like, et cetera. You know what? If CVS comes in and the other businesses go out, that's light. If CVS comes in and people say there's no need for it, well, obviously, they're not gonna make it. But I don't wanna subsidize, even as a village resident, businesses to stay in business. I mean, if I have a choice of spending five dollars for a project, or as opposed to the village, which is all, you know, guaranteed, and you're gonna be here forever paying ten, I want that choice. And so do a lot of other people who are struggling to get by, particularly the people in the town. I mean, I heard one young lady say the dorm. Now, they talk about import patches, but a dorm is okay with all the noise and the traffic and the non-taxpayer and the fact that the town would have to, you know, pay for it. There is a definite benefit, okay? And I think some type of accord can be reached, and I think it should be looked at. But again, the fact, unlike our point, that would have destroyed the town because there was no taxes, I don't believe they're asking for any tax abatement. I'm wrong? Let them get the heck out of here, too. But if they're willing to pay their fair share of taxes, which if you look at the businesses in the village, don't, they use the bulk of the services, the businesses, and the town pays for the bulk of those services. You know, so now you have a business that's gonna come into the town that is actually going to help those people who actually pay taxes, and, you know, and make it so that they can go out and, you know, buy their kids a video game or whatever, as opposed to having to subsidize, you know, the village people. And that's all I wanna say, you see, you know, there is a benefit to this, and the rest of this stuff, you know, need, it's, you know, blowing in the wind. It means nothing, you know, it's just auspicion, you know, they don't care. Thank you.
Thank you, Ira. Aileen Simon? I think I got it. Simon? Burdo, okay. John Undercofer?
I don't want to see this.
Okay. Joe? Joe Hess, H-E-A. There you go.
Joe Haas?
Yep. Told you.
Just heard from Karma Haas.
Yeah, but I could read her handwriting. I couldn't read your handwriting.
Joe Haas, H-A-A-S. I agree with my wife mostly, but all the people who are opposed to the development. To me, it's just one more very generic, non-pedestrian friendly, only, you know, you can only drive to these places, something that will pull people away from downtown New Paltz. What makes our town unique and gives it character is the downtown area and I'm opposed to this oversized development that would pull away from that. Again, people are going to get off the throughway and they're going to think New Paltz is, you know, the geography of nowhere, like every other, like every other generic town all over the country. And, you know, I don't think that's why people want to live here. I think people want to live here because it's, New Paltz is unique and something special, something different. That's all I'd say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Hello, my name is Christina Vazquez, B-A-Z, Q-U-E-Z. And I hate public speaking, so I obviously feel pretty strongly about this. My name is Christina and I've lived in New Paltz for eight years and in the... Don't talk for your face. Okay. And in the Hudson Valley for 36. I'm here tonight in staunch opposition to the CBS Five Guys application. As a resident of this town, as a small business owner, and as a loyal patron of our local businesses, I find this application not only unnecessary, but offensive. I don't need to remind anyone or reiterate how many pharmacies we already have. I don't need to remind anyone that for greasy burgers and fries, there are two drive-through choices across the street from each other. I don't need to remind anyone that North Putt cut-throughs are becoming main roads by locals now in an effort to avoid the already dreaded Main Street 299 area.
Take a breath, everyone, once in a while.
I do want to remind everyone of the quotes on our town's website. "New Paltz is arguably best known around the world for its outdoor attractions and for good reason. New Paltz offers a host of trail options for hikers and bicyclists with some of the best views of the Hudson Valley. Does this sound like an area that wants to promote an unhealthy eating agenda, a Five Guys restaurant, and a giant CBS? To again quote our town website, 'Our region's farmers, winemakers, bakers, and chefs are proud to have been early and vocal adopters of farm-to-table principles and the idea that relationship building between farmers and consumers yields delicious results. Local and sustainable are more than a few trendy words in New Paltz and the surrounding region, they're a way of life. Do Five Guys or CBS sound like they fit that description? Is either local, sustainable, or relationship building? CVS prides itself in being the largest pharmacy healthcare provider in the U.S. Dedrick's are local, family-owned healthcare provider. On the other hand, is a family pharmacy offering the best prescription service found anywhere. You will feel at home when you are served by the Sheelys and their wonderful staff.' Which more appropriately suits the alleged beliefs and convictions of this town? I hope that this town will stand by what I believed it to represent when my family and I moved here. Thank you."
Thank you. Michael Cherry.
So first I'd like to express my opposition to the CBS. A lot of the basic ideas powered can express. I drive North Putt daily. I see the traffic coming in at times, it's horrendous as is. I don't see CBS improving that situation, I see it making the situation considerably worse. All of the issues I drive through through Henry W. DeBois and Horsonton, those will all be exacerbated. Obviously, I don't believe we need another pharmacy. I believe CBS is just the largest, one of the largest healthcare providers. It's a $112 billion company. It has grown hugely through acquisitions, it buys, it's been building new stores throughout the country. Its sole purpose seems to be growth and it seems to do that without any real feeling for where it is growing. New Paltz, I believe, has a unique, wonderful town atmosphere. I think CBS, just from there, shown there, they want a mega store, they want to use their cookie cutter construction. They're not particularly interested in bike lanes or pedestrian crosses. They seem to have a disdain for the community. I would prefer any business moving into the community to have an affinity for the people as opposed to the growth of the corporation.
Thank you. Tracy.
My name is Tracy Flack Cherry and I would like to strong, I'm strongly opposed to having CBS coming. I, Mike Myherson, we do the same drive. I'm on North Putt and watching traffic get back into that corner all the time. Having a CBS there is going to make it so much worse. We already have, one of the things that happens at that corner is that people coming onto North Putt from Main Street and crossing what is already a difficult crossing, I've seen people just sort of hit bicyclists and I know that they're planning bicycle lanes, having more traffic in that little area that dips down, I understand they're going to raise it, but it just doesn't make any sense, doesn't make any sense at all to me. I think we have some really good options already as far as drugstores and really like local. I don't really want to see our money going out of the community if it doesn't have to. I'd love to, you know, I love Water Street Market, I love different business, I like business, but I like business that seems to go with the, with the, the nature of the town. I think that's, that is my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Laura?
Laura Denay.
Which one? Oh, which? Whites?
Laura Denay?
No. Yellow Laura. Guys, you've got to memorize the name in front of you, that's to make it easier for me.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Laura Wyeth, W-Y-E-T-H. I've worked in retail all of my working life as an adult. I've worked for very large corporations like Borders, which no longer exists, and Lowe's, and I've worked for lots of small independent businesses, which I am very happy to work for one now. It is an issue that, that we do need to protect our local businesses, which means we need to be very careful about deciding whether to accept one of the large multinational corporation box stores. We have a Rite Aid. I'm not quite sure what we would need a CBS for, but I do know, having worked for Lowe's, they have a specific program, I guess, to, to make a store wherever there's a Home Depot. Home Depot has the same plan. I wouldn't be that surprised, this is speculation of course, but I wouldn't be that surprised if, you know, perhaps Rite Aid and CBS have a similar agenda. So, you know, if they're just competing with each other, how is the town of New Paltz benefiting from that? And of course, we have Dedrick's, which several people mentioned, and is a fantastic local, family establishment, which we should support. Obviously, the traffic is an issue and what I haven't heard anyone mention yet is surely if the traffic gets worse, accidents get worse. If we have more accidents, what does that cost us? What does that cost in terms of the police force and the emergency services, the things that, you know, the taxpayers are going to pay for that go along with, with something like this? I mean, if it were even in a different location, I think this discussion would be a different one. You know, if it were somewhere further out, closer to the Lowe's, for example, I feel like we'd be having a different discussion. But this location is, it's a bad one. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Tova? Here.
First name? Tova Witzman. I really don't have much to add to many of the points, the objectives I brought up to this project. I just want to add my voice, my strong voice against welcoming CBS to New Paltz in this location. Given, I live in the town, I'm looking at Mr. Margolis. I've been living in the town for 30 years. I see absolutely no benefit from it, it's a town where, from this mega corporation business, known for its lack of consideration, community aesthetics. Traffic is a big issue. We live on Dusing Road close to Main Street. It's impossible to take a left turn to Main Street to walk in other places. We have to go down Dusing, turn to Henry W. and up North Putt. I can't imagine what the traffic could be with this business, mega business, generic business, predatory business coming to the corner of New Paltz, taking the right, this big place and trying to make tons of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Laura.
Hi, I'm Laura Denay. I'm from the Environmental Board, the ENCV. And I'm here as liaison, so if any of you would like me to bring anything back, our meeting's on Wednesday and we are planning on doing some comments very soon after our next meeting. It's going to be fun today. But I just wanted to read a couple of what those comments are that will be coming. According to the Hudson River Estuary Program's National Resource Mapper, "The back of the North Putt's property is a possible wetland and the forest in the back part of the 1,200 acre, oh, sorry, the forest in the back is a part of a 1,200 acre stepping stone forest significant for animal migrations and habitat. Across the street, there is a freshwater emergent wetland, a small lake, and a large probable wetland. Keeping in mind that our town's relatively, keeping in mind our town's relatively new wetlands law, and as we suggested in our first letter dated back in November of 2013, the ENCV recommends that James Spider Barber visit the site to ensure that no wetlands exist on the property and to understand the potential interactions with the surrounding wetlands. Also in terms of stormwater, though the Ulster Department of Public Works says that this SWIP appears in accordance with the New York State Stormwater Management Design Manual, we need to keep in mind New Paltz's MS4 designation and its new regulations. Enforcing this falls on us as a town, not on the builders or owners. And if we're not compliant, it's possible that the DEP could impose heavy fines on us as a town. So we just need to make sure that this project and all projects in New Paltz will be MS4 compliant." You'll be what? MS4 compliant.
Don't worry, the planning board's well aware that we're MS4.
Okay, great. One more will come next evening.
Thank you. Liz?
My name is Liz Bonhag, B-A-Z, O-N-H-A-G. I've been a New Paltz resident for 30 years, was born here, and I still live here with my family, new family. And I oppose the CBS. I just want to state that I have no doubt in my mind that it will be detrimental to our community character and there is no doubt in my mind that it will be detrimental to our local economy. In addition, I'm concerned about the traffic implications of the project. I fear that we will lose our left hand, I'm sorry, our right hand turn, I think it's called a slip lane, onto North Putt. I live on the north side of Main Street and I often use that when I'm going home to avoid Main Street traffic. I go down Henry W. DeBois, but I know other people who would use it to use either Shippertown or Horsonton to avoid New Paltz altogether and get over to Rosendale or beyond to Kingston if they weren't taking the throughway. So I feel like that's a very valuable little traffic thingamajigger to use and it helps you to avoid, Main Street traffic helps to cut down on traffic on Main Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael? Here.
My name is Michael, the last name is Zealer, Z-E-B-R-A, I-E-R-L-E-R. Members of the town and New Paltz Planning Board, thank you very much for the time you're putting in to review this application for CBS and a restaurant. The number of citizens of New Paltz and our neighbors in other towns who are concerned about the negative impacts of this site plan has been growing very rapidly. The petition that we've had out is overflowing with signatures and you'll hear more about that later tonight, and their social media presence grows every day. As we talk with our friends and neighbors and local shop owners, the unanimous voices that this site plan is much too large and too insensitive to the community's needs, its values, and to the complexities of this location. The applicant, CBS, is doing here what they do in communities everywhere across the United States and that they've been doing year after year after year. In St. James, New York, in Sebastopol, California, in Genoa Township, Ohio, in St. James, New York, Sebastopol, California, Genoa Township, Ohio, Nantucket, Massachusetts, Dundee, Nebraska, Byram, New Jersey, and many other towns and cities around the United States, CBS submits an application to build a store at the busiest intersection in town in order specifically to garner the greatest visibility. They do it, however, without regard for traffic impacts, sensitivity to historic buildings, concern for community character and values, for the economic impacts on already existing local businesses, or environmental destruction. There are numerous examples of this on the internet if you'd like to see, the kinds of buildings they've gone down, 200-year-old historic buildings, cemeteries, and the like. Almost all of the problems about this application here in New Paltz come back to the details of this specific site plan. That's what I'd like to focus on. I asked the planning board to consider two possible alternatives. The first alternative, if you wish to work with this existing site plan, and I would point out that you are not required to work with this existing site plan, that is, you can insist on significant changes for a variety of reasons that people are defensively putting up. If that's the case, we urge you to consider the multitude of issues this site plan will impact. Traffic has gotten its lion's share of attention, but I would argue that that's by no means the only one of that importance. We ask you further to consider these issues carefully and discuss them among yourselves at length and if necessary, without the applicant at the table during your discussions in order to avoid interruptions. We raised a number of these issues in a letter that I helped author. It was presented May 7th, 2015, and read at your last planning board meeting. At that time, in that letter, we provided a factual basis for each of our concerns and cited various planning documents that support our concerns. Please note that each of these planning documents are ones that have been accepted and approved by resolution by the town board. These documents have been vetted by the community and by experts and they carry considerable weight. This site plan raises issues of concern that might have a significant negative impact on our community and I will by and large just list them, as I said, many of them were already discussed in the previous letter. First, traffic impacts on residential neighborhoods along Henry W. DeBois Drive and the long streets that connect to Henry W. DeBois, especially neighborhoods between Henry W. and Main Street. And you've heard and will continue to hear from people... Impacts of potential future development on this site. The applicant should either agree to waive the right for any future development on this parcel beyond what is on the site plan, as there is an additional undeveloped piece to the north, or every study that is done on this should be required to be based on a maximum build-out for that site. Anything less is segmentation under secret that they would have to argue they have the right to do, and I don't see it. Fourth, impacts of clearcutting and grade changes on the migration of air pollutants from the thruway into residential neighborhoods could be significant when trees are cut down and the topography, which helps to reduce those migrations, we would ask that that be looked at. In addition, impacts of clearcutting and the proposed grade changes on noise pollution, and you've already heard from some throughway, some from the thruway, and you've heard from residents of these neighborhoods where they would be impacted. Impacts on wetlands and watercourses. There's absolutely a need to have the town wetlands inspector assess the impact of this site plan on wetlands and watercourses that might be on the site, and as noted previously in our letter, they were indicated that there was wetlands there, and further, those that are known to be on neighboring properties. We know there's a large pond on the west side of North Putt Corners Road. We know there's substantial wetlands and ponds that are hydrologically connected, and if so, likely by water that flows through the site proposed for development. We ask that in addition to the analysis by the wetlands inspector, tests be done to determine whether pumping out underground water proposed to be used for potable water at the site will impact these neighboring wetlands and water bodies. I want to emphasize that all of these water bodies feed directly into the tributaries that flow into the Millbrook. And again, the town of New Paltz and the community have made considerable investment in time and money in protecting those woods and wetlands and streams in the Millbrook Preserve, and it would be tragic if this development negatively impacted the Millbrook Preserve in any way. Impacts on habitat destruction and fragmentation should be assessed. Engage a biodiversity expert to determine the impacts of this site on habitat destruction and fragmentation.
Slow down, Mike.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'll have a hard time making five minutes.
Yeah, I know.
Tell me.
Just give me the paper when you're done.
Impacts on habitat destruction and fragmentation. Engage a biodiversity expert to determine the impacts of this site plan on habitat destruction and fragmentation that could disrupt the migratory patterns of birds and land animals. Please look at the impacts on existing businesses and local economy. Engage an expert on community economic analysis to determine the impacts of such a large CBS in New Paltz. And somebody raised the point about whether or not this would provide tax relief for residents of the community, a legitimate question, and this person, this economic analysis expert, could also determine if it will in fact lower taxes for you. But without that study, there's no way really to accurately determine it. Furthermore, the Putt Corners Carter Study made clear that the best economic use of this area was professional offices and light industrial, not large mega retail. Visual impacts. The Ulster County Planning Board requires the applicant to provide photo simulations of the proposed project. The one-page example provided so far by the applicant is woefully inadequate. There are accepted standards for preparing these photo simulations. They were not used in this case. Please engage a planner to work with the applicant so that those photo simulations can provide you useful information. As noted, the CBS development model is to build in the location of greatest visibility. We do not have to accept the horrendous visual impacts of this site plan. I will offer an alternative in a moment. Impacts on community character. Our community will likely soon be updating our comprehensive plan. This collaborative effort between all sectors of the community and both town and village governments will, I hope, identify what is our vision for our Main Street, meaning from Ohioville Road all the way to the Walk Hill River. I propose we adopt a holistic view of Main Street that will embrace our desires for walkability, safety, architectural and aesthetic beauty, mixed uses, and a sense of place and history that defines New Paltz. I recognize there's much to do on Main Street to achieve those goals, but adopting this current CBS site plan at this critical location will only make that work much, much harder.
I, you about finished?
No, I, just two more minutes, or one minute.
One minute.
I can, I can read faster, but trade off. I want to give you a second alternative. This is to request that the applicant abandon this site plan and return with a much lower impact site plan. And this is to point out that it's not that there need be no development at this site, but that it should be appropriate for the potential impacts. Here are some, just a list of possible suggestions. Ingress and egress for a project there would only be from Route 299, not from North Putt. Limit the size to about 6,000 square feet, roughly half of what they have. More appropriate for this community. Minimize clearcutting of trees and topographical changes to the site so that the store and parking lot are invisible from the roadways. There's precedent for this. There's a Hattiford supermarket on Route 9 in Red Hook that is completely invisible from the road except for a small sign at the intersection. Furthermore, our clearing and grading control section of the town New Paltz zoning code is designed, quote, "to prevent indiscriminate and excessive cutting of trees and natural vegetation," unquote. There is no justification for allowing this applicant to clearcut the property, and alternatives clearly exist. Prohibit any drive-through facilities, and here's an interesting one. Negotiate a trail easement that would locate the bicycle trail instead of along 299 and then down North Putt across the perimeter of this property. For example, bicyclists traveling west along 299 would cross the thruway and then enter the property in its southeast corner. An attractive trail could be created that follows the natural existing terrain through wooded areas and brings riders to the northernmost part of the site. A negotiation with the neighboring property owner would allow riders to then, a short distance ahead, travel off-road and then directly across from Henry Du Bois. A crosswalk could be installed, and they would get safely across to North Putt, across North Putt to Henry Du Bois. Ideally, limit uses of this site to only CBS. Five Guys should be encouraged to work with the New Paltz Chamber of Commerce to identify a suitable site for their business in one of the several vacant storefronts along Main Street, and at least two of them would place their businesses within walking distance of suing New Paltz. Based on the previous public hearing, I fully expect the attorney for the applicant will say these studies are not needed. He'll say, as he already has, for example, there are no wetlands on the site. That's true, there are no DEC-designated wetlands, which is all they've investigated. That means wetlands of 12.4 acres or more, which is hard to find on a six-acre site. We don't know anything beyond that, except, with all due respect to the attorney, as far as I know, he's not a wetlands expert. And so it's not up to him to say whether or not you, the planning board, need a wetlands inspector to look at the property. It isn't up to him to tell you whether or not an economic analysis of this pharmacy is needed, and he doesn't get to vote on whether you hire a biodiversity expert. These are your decisions, your discussions, and your responsibilities. The seven of you decide whether these are necessary or not.
Wrap it up, Mike?
I am. Just down the road in Village Hall, I sit where you are sitting. I understand what it's like to be a planning board member, and for me, I always want to make sure that I have all of the information I need and all of the possible alternatives so that I can be the most informed. We in the audience, we the people who have signed our petition, we are your friends and neighbors, and we trust you all to represent us. We urge you to keep the public hearing open, at least until you've completed your secret determination. Thank you for your patience, and thank you very much for your input.
Thank you, Michael. Kevin?
Hi, Kevin Borden, like Lizzie Borden, but no accents. So my partner Teresa and I and our two boys live in Calvin Boulevard, so. My partner Teresa and I and our two boys live on Calvin Boulevard. First, I want to thank the planning board for your tireless volunteer service on our planning board. It's really important work that you do, so thanks from the bottom of my heart. You know, I think Michael summed up basically all of my and Teresa's concerns exactly. So I'm just going to go on a little bit of a different point here. So I've been extremely fortunate for the last 20 years to work in the nonprofit sector, assisting local community organizations to better understand the fiscal and economic impacts of certain corporate business models on any given community. So beyond the clear impacts that CBS's proposed development will undoubtedly have on our local environment, our traffic patterns, our community character, our items that are related to potential long-term damaging impacts on our economy as a whole. So it doesn't take an economic genius to scratch a little bit at their business model and uncover some very puzzling and troubling trends. Here's just one example. So CBS's CEO has taken a public stance to promote benefit cuts to vital public programs that people in our community rely on while decreasing their overall corporate tax rate and tax rates for the wealthiest in our country. So this is not made up. So CBS's CEO Larry Merlow is a part of an organization called Fix the Debt, which is now a discredited national organization that's raised over $60 million and recruited more than 80 CEOs of America's most powerful companies. Fix the Debt has taken a public position to push for misguided austerity measures that include cutbacks to Social Security and Social Security disability, items such as raising the retirement age or negatively adjusting the already paltry cost of living formula for those that are on Social Security and Social Security disability. All the while, pushing for renewal of tax cuts for the wealthiest, and in my opinion, those that don't need one. So let's kind of take that apart for a second. So on one hand, CBS's business model is mainly focused on delivering prescription medications. Those medications will obviously see higher percentage usage by those that are seniors, disabled, or both. So yet, on the other hand, they want to undercut the economic security of those seniors or folks living with disabilities so that their CEO can continue to live under a disproportionately beneficial tax rate. That's almost like bizarre, if not cruel. So given those kinds of behaviors, I would ask at the bare minimum that we really need to keep this public dialogue open. We need to better understand the impact of this development on our community, not just around the environment, not just around traffic, but also around the long-term economic impacts a company like CBS can have on our local economy. So, so again, I do think, like, as we continue to face development pressures, we need to have a better roadmap on how to better determine more holistically these impacts on the future development of our community, on our environment, on our families, and on our, on our economy. So again, I want to thank you for your service. Thanks so much for allowing the members of the public, like myself, to offer up comments, and have a good night.
Thank you. Jan Cryer? David Morgan? Is that a team? Is that a team?
It's C-Y-R is what I have. Janice. Yes. C-Y-R, and this is Dave Morgan. So I beg your pardon for, this is my first time doing this sort of thing. I'm not entirely aware of all of the protocol, and I'm obviously not prepared with the data that Kevin has, so. But I have more questions than I have, I think, arguments against it. And again, because I have not been part of this process, maybe these have already been explained, but have we considered the long-term plans for New Paltz Town and Village, what we want it to look like or feel like when we're making these decisions? Do we really understand the corporate agendas of these companies when they're coming in and potentially yield a lot of political power? And is a fourth drugstore needed? Is the information about our long-term plan available for the public? Is there a place where we can see this so we understand what the end goal is? Will this sort of thing drive out another business, leaving another vacant building sitting around? And who really suffers the most from this and who gains the most from this? I believe who suffers are the small family retailers. As somebody who came here eight years ago with the specific purpose of opening a small business that really didn't stand a chance against big-box retailers, not to mention online, that did not last. But my other comment would be, I moved here with four boys because I specifically liked this environment. I'm from a place where I had lower taxes, I was only across the river in Dutchess County, had bigger house and smaller taxes. I moved here because I liked this area. I moved here because of our natural resources. I take advantage of the hiking, the biking, rock climbing, running on the trails. I don't, I used to, I mean, there's not much that I don't take advantage of, and that's why I came here. That's what I believe the value of my home is based on, and I believe that the value of our community was in maintaining this unique character that we're just so lucky to have. I mean, we couldn't plant those mountains there, they're there. People come here for that. I don't really think people are coming here for CBS. I think, in my opinion, are we considering how much we're spreading out, and do we want to focus more on what we currently have and improving that and finding ways for people to get stronger in their business and affecting our local economy that way? That's really all I have to say. More questions than answers, and I appreciate you allowing us to speak.
Thank you. Kitty, you can take a slow walk up, okay? We're trying to eat paper here.
Oh, it's amazing. How slow is slow? You're not going to take this up for five minutes, are you? Okay, first of all, I apologize.
Wait, wait, wait till you get set. That's why I said a slow walk.
You don't need to record this. Apologies for reading it from here, Rocky Hill Rose with Cloud Tower all day.
Yes.
And my battery came right out here. So, wow, we've stepped a lot of words.
No comment.
Yeah, New Paltz. At our last meeting, CBS promised to meet with our police, rescue squad, and firefighters, and is there a place where we can renew the outcome of that meeting? I don't know if you've seen that, or if there is any actual.
They have met. We did get something from the chief today, I think, an email.
Yeah, we got today.
So that's what.
So we can get to see that online eventually. At the last meeting, I mentioned that the narrative on your website is out of date as it referred to a fueling station that has since been replaced by Five Guys. When Tom Powers followed up on this, the attorney for CBS denied it, but unless it was drawn and replaced by a new narrative at the time of the hearing, my statement was accurate and his was not. So I hope you'll determine tonight if the narrative that is currently part of the public record of this hearing refers to fueling stations or to Five Guys. If it still says fueling station, I ask that you keep the public hearing open until the narrative has been updated. Also, the May 14 letter from DOT to the applicant notes that they were asked to comment on a plan that included a fueling station. CBS required that they change the name to Five Guys. Does that qualify as a new traffic study? There's no difference between a gas station selling petroleum products and a burger joint? That is scary in so many ways. I confess that I don't really understand the timeline of site plan review, so I hope you'll help us understand the purpose of this public hearing. If it stays open while you do seeker, the public needs to understand when our comments will be considered and addressed. Do you do the seeker process during this public hearing, or is there a separate public hearing after this one? At what point does our wetlands inspector get to review this property? At what point does our wetlands inspector get to review this property? Current D E C maps may not show a state wetland, but given the location of this property, it's probable that there is a town of wetland there. One of the comments in one of Dave Pousers' memos states that businesses across the street from CBS should be identified. If that has not yet been done, please ask CBS to amend its maps to show them. And I know you have a lot on your plate, but I implore you to go and stand at the proposed entrance on North Cut Corner. Yes, it may comply with the minimum standards that CBS supplied, but is it up to your standards? Do you think the traffic, that when traffic is finally free to make that right-hand turn from 299, they are going to have enough sight distance before they have to jam on their brakes for someone pulling out of CBS? And about that right-hand turn and slip lane, does a single project really have the right to deprive thousands of local residents of this historic use of that slip lane? It's not just Newfall's it depends on the congestion from leaving bypass, it's people who lived at Tilson, Rosedale, and Allpoint south of Kingston. Traffic was backed up east of the thruway this weekend as things are now. What kind of nightmare will we face if CBS takes our slip lane away? Local law number three, passed by our town board in 2014, D1, Sessions A and B, require our planning board to consider the health, safety, and convenience and comfort of the general public. I don't think this plan rises to that standard and I hope you will factor that into your deliberations. I hope that you will request an economic impact statement from CBS. Are they planning to apply for a pilot? And what will their impact be on our local economy? CBS claims they will not be generating a significant amount of new traffic. Well, that must mean that they plan to take business away from our local businesses. I don't know what percentage of their retail business is novelty items, toys, packaged food, flip flops, gurney gloves, but how much business do they need to take away from our existing businesses to meet their target? About the fairing and grading law and the tree identification that our town board requires, if the Mohawk Preserve can do the tree inventory on eight acres, CBS can do it on five. Please do not set aside this important environmental safeguard for a gigantic multinational corporation while our local nonprofit is willing to comply. Finally, whether we love or hate CBS, we know that this parcel is zoned for commercial use, but ask yourselves why this parcel remains undeveloped. It is constrained by topography, probable wetlands, lack of road footage that realistically provides for public safety. If CBS wants to spend the money, this would be a plan that conforms to every requirement of our zoning, let's see it. In my opinion, they're not even close. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you so much for being here and all your service and, oh, Julie Lillis, L I L L I S. I brought my assistant and I'm hoping she can speak after. I first would like to start with just an update on the petition that I started a couple, just a few months ago. Total, we had it in some grocery store, at some registers and local businesses, the total, 1,085 currently and it's growing, but I've collected them all from the other stores and it's still online. 1,085, there are a couple people said, oh my gosh, I signed twice, but I don't think it's going to be, that doesn't make a big dent, it's not a lot of people who did that. The comments that, you know, I have hundreds of comments from people ranging from, actually, I sort of scanned them and some of them are highlighted, but I won't take time to read them now, but it's, they really, people are very passionate especially about traffic, about local character and local-ism, you know, being sensitive to the organizations and businesses that, you know, put money back into the community. So I'd like to present them, but I wanted to point out something about one particular store, Health and Nutrition. They were given one, you know, one petition, went there, not even two weeks later, and they had just taken it upon themselves to photocopy our pages, put it at all three registers, and wrote the words, I'll show you, "Sign me" at the top. So this is another store doing this themselves, you know, they're not sort of grudgingly taking this and, all right, we'll put it on there. So they were very enthusiastic and once they got full pages, they added more pages. So they, easily 550 came from Health and Nutrition patrons alone. So I think that says a lot. I kind of, you know, I did it because I thought that would be the case. I thought this was the kind of community that I moved into in 1995 and the first thing I did was put, stop mauling Newfall's, I bought the sticker on my car and, you know, I didn't have a chance because I didn't really know about the issues to influence that decision. I was celebrating when it went away, but now I've heard my chance, so. There's a couple things that I wanted to address that I've heard in the public hearings. I've been coming to all of them, but they hadn't missed one, but I did, I did watch it in its entirety. Forgive me, I have some notes on this phone. One of the things that really does concern me is something that I, was, you know, pointed out to me. This is a map and it's a site plan and it is old, it's one that was, not that old. This is an earlier version of the site plan. And over here, it says potential pad site, future pad site. And there's a note over here that says potential pad site for signage only. Site plan design and approval will come under a separate ad petition. And it just mysteriously disappeared in all of the current versions. And I, I don't know whether you guys know what happened to it and why, if you may, and but what I was wondering, you know, I have a lot of new friends and one of them used the word segmentation and wondered if this would fall under segmentation, which is not allowed, to, you know, sort of present something in bits and pieces so that it may be more palpable and more passable. And especially if you're doing, say, a, you know, traffic study that is based on two businesses in this location versus three, you know, so that mysterious disappearance, I'd be very interested in knowing more about it. Because I, you know, I mentioned that to one person who owns a local stop and she really did shudder thinking, God, could it be something that competes with me, you know? I also wanted to bring up a couple more things. And one has to do with a cliff. Now, I'm a rock climber and I'm fond of cliffs, but not ones that are made of shale and might be topped by a chain-like fence. If you're raising the, CBS is raising the site 10 to 15 feet and the site goes almost all the way to a screwway, there's got to be some sort of drop-off, some steep drop-off. And I wondered, you know, what are they going to do with that? Is that going to be shale and a chain-like fence at the top because you can't have people fall off that? So I'd like to know if, what their plan is. I have, you know, the planned meetings, I haven't, I haven't printed anything about it, but, you know, I would definitely like to know what it's going to look like because that's, as you're driving down through a, or looking at from, you know, so what's Newfall's look like? Mmm, you know, so from the thruway, it should not look like that, I really hope. So another thing I wanted to point out was that I've been, I've sort of Googled CBS and just to see what happens and I, after Kitty Brown's comment last planning board meeting about their green initiatives, I was curious. So I found some articles, there's one that says CBS claims, well, that's funny, it's aims, aims to take care of Mother Earth and us too. Another article I found, it says they launched a program which gives shoppers discounts for going a bag. They get a little, they buy a dollar recycle tag and they get punched four times or get a scan four times and they get a dollar off their next CBS visit. So that's obviously nice and environmental. Another article said CBS is, well, there's a, in West Haven, Connecticut, they're being applauded for energy efficient design with high efficiency lighting and electric charging station. And it says CBS Health is piloting several environmental innovations and best practices at the features, well, with features that, adding features to their stores and facilities. The initiative aligns closely with CBS Health overall CSR platform. So prescription for a better world as the company is committed to reducing its impact on the environment. Now, wouldn't that be ironic and very sad if they tried to do all sorts of, you know, nice things for the environment once they cut down all the trees and ruin the habitat? So, and lastly, you know, Kitty Brown, I think, said it best that it would be nice to have them, you know, take back this application and redo it with all that in mind. And maybe they would come up with the, that they didn't need to cut down all the trees and then maybe they needed to move into places, an existing parking lot. Some final concerns about the environment involve the wetlands that are right across the street. They acknowledged, it's been acknowledged, although I think it was missing from some reports that there's a wetlands, D E C recognized 100 feet or less from the site. And they also say that actually their sewage, you know, runoff will go into that, that they can't find a culvert because that, you know, I found a culvert, but I don't know if it's the one that would be the appropriate one. Either way, I've walked, it is lovely, I've walked down into both, wetlands on either side of this site and they're incredible, very diverse. You know, I found a coyote den, I scared away a rabbit and, you know, made a giant toad flap into the water and there was a deer that I scared away. And also importantly, the pond that's there on the other side of CBS, on the side of North Cut, has an outlet going straight to Mil, you know, toward Milburn Preserve and I'm certain that's where it eventually ends up and then ends up in, you know, ends up in Milburn Preserve, Tributary 13, and it ends up in the Wild Hill. Well, if we have, you know, stormwater going in there, with the current climate change and storms being so much more, you know, major storms, sort of overwhelming things like treatment, I can imagine that this, you know, this would not be healthy for the wetlands that are right on the other side. So I can't see how your protect, you know, there's a local and state, you know, protected wetlands, how this is okay. I hope it's not, that isn't determined to be. And also there's a question of when you're filling, how do you get the, it's not a natural, like round, I don't know how you're going to store the, do you have the infiltration systems? And they did acknowledge that there are some things that have to work out technically and I don't know how they worked that out, but I'm very interested in knowing and I hope it's really looked into so that we protect all the wetlands and that we don't overwhelm them and possibly lead to flooding, you know, our own basements. And that's, I'm sure I should move on, but last thing maybe I want to say is that I absolutely agree that all that traffic that's, you know, comes down H W DuBois because of the dysfunctional intersection, it will affect us because we bike on that. We bike all over, you know, people are going to be wanting to enter the Milburn Preserve from those areas, want to bike to it. And people will come up down my street that has no, has no stop sign, so it's really appealing for people who want to go fast, but when they do those cut-throughs, my street is doozing and that's going to be, you know, very disappointing for me because my tribe could possibly, you know, be affected by it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is it possible she can read up on it first?
Sure, go ahead.
I walk in them, I ski in them, I search for signs of animals in them. In the Milburn Preserve, I have found coyote dens, prister tracks, and scat on beaver dams. I know they're all connected. If you're, if you are an animal, you don't stop at property boundaries or roads. If you are traveling from wetland to wetland, searching for food, you need places like CBS site to hide in before racing across the thruway. But if you're a small rodent, watch out because there's a very active great blue hair nest site with over 10 active nests. So you better watch out because animals also wander through Milburn Preserve. The greatest wetlands on earth don't live up there anymore.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Stana, S T A N as in Nancy, A, and my last, my last name is Weisberg, W E I S as in Sam, B as in boy, U R D as in David. Can you tell I spell it a lot? I want to start by thanking the planning board for all of their hard work, the time and energy that you give to our town is invaluable and really appreciated, and I also appreciate the opportunity to speak. Our town has to live with whatever development goes on this parcel. It will be what greets most people who come to our town and the surrounding areas. Its impact will be huge and will include traffic, which has been spoken through a lot, you know, we need that slip lane. Certainly this development will add to the traffic issues. Safety, bikes and pedestrians, back to the traffic stuff, along with safety, health concerns of particulate air pollution, that sort of thing. Noise, the fact that there are natural burns there and clearing and grading will change all of that. Economics, ethical business that makes sound sense for our community financially, living wages for our neighbors, and to the community's well-being. We need to know the real tax benefits this could offer versus the services that will be used. Will the costs and benefits actually work in our favor? Will they ask for a pilot? Garbage, police, fire, et cetera, how will our existing local businesses be affected? Will the economic impact benefit our community as a whole? What makes us unique, as others have said? We don't want to look like other places, it's a large part of why I moved here, why many of us live here, and what fuels our economy. And as others have said, our gateway should reflect what makes us special. Wetlands, wildlife, ecosystem, plant life, I know others have said things about this and I'm going to go more into it myself. I beg you to please make them comply with our existing requirements. All the intended and as many of the unintended consequences as we can ascertain must be weighed. This is the only way to come to a clear and confident decision. I've heard that a wetlands map made 20 years ago indicates there are wetlands on the site. The land is surrounded by wetlands, one just 100 feet from the site. According to the D E C website, quote, the science, sorry, according to the D E C website, quote, "The science of wetlands also has matured in the past 20 years. The old perception that all wetlands are marshy and have open water has been placed in a new context. We now know that only about 14% of our wetlands fit this cocktail marsh with a duck image. Most of our wetlands are shrub or forested swamps and many lie along rivers and streams in the floodplain riparian zone. In the past, many of these critical wetlands were missed in the mapping process." Excuse me, as Julie said, sewage goes where? Into Milbrook, Tri, Milbrook, Tributary 13. There are other possible things we could put on the site, welcome center, chamber of commerce, a natural playground. I'm not going to go into any of the traffic stuff, I thought I was going to say. The scale again of this project is out of balance with our area. The applicant seeks to build a store the same size as they have in Kingston. Kingston is a city, Newfall's is not, we are a town. And the character of our area must be respected and preserved. And the character of our area must be respected and preserved. The applicant has not proven a want or need for such a large business. How do they expect to be financially viable here? Many people, 1,085 approximately, have signed a petition saying they will not shop there. Imagine how many people that actually represents, because for every person who signs, there are lots of people who haven't signed who might sign if they knew that there was such a thing. The planning board must have its own experts to help it make a truly well-rounded and fully informed decision. It is asking too much of you, the board members, not to have the help you need to make a decision on this matter without the advice of unbiased or the least possible biased experts. For instance, on wildlife, wetlands, noise, community character, pollution, traffic, financial impact, et cetera, you are left with only one side of the equation, that of the applicant. This is simply unfair and asks the board to spend the time hearing this application without giving it the tools for making a ruling that is balanced and respectful of the board and our community. So, we're worried, some of us, about the possible impact on the spread of Lyme disease. Land fragmentation increases our risk of contracting Lyme disease, which is carried not only by deer but by mice. Say a white-footed mouse hosts a tick, which then drops to the ground and onto you. The probability that it has Lyme is 90%. When we take away habitat, we make it harder for the animals that eat mice to move around, and they will move away. We need to keep our birds of prey and cannibals like foxes and coyotes. As we lose diversity because we chop up the continuous forests and habitats, the white-footed mouse is the last to go. We lose species that protect us and we're favoring the ones that harm us. I urge you to look at pages four through eight and nine in the Mid Hudson Sustainability Plan, of which the town of New Paltz is an endorser, page six, I believe, and I'm quoting from it. "In order to help limit the spread of this disease, local land use, planning, and implementation must take into account the forest fragmentation created as a result of development. Smart growth principles that decrease the fragmentation of forests will allow for better protection of habitat, limiting the spread of Lyme disease vectors in the region. We, the community, ask that all renderings be to human scale with a person in the photographs and that they be presented alongside current photos of the same spot and perspective so we can understand what we're looking at. Respectfully ask that the public hearing for this application be kept open, at least through seeker. As new information is brought to the board, the public must be able to offer comment and perspective." Lastly, I again, I think a lower impact site plan, a newer one, coming back with that is a great idea. Everything Michael Zee said, I agree with. Pollution, clearing and grading, bike trails across the perimeter, what a fabulous idea. And the third pad site segmentation is another thing that concerns me. Thank you all again for your time, your hard work, and your attention to this town.
Thank you, Stan.
Hi, I'm Seth McKee, 23 Dusene Road.
Seth, sorry.
Seth. McKee.
M-C-K-E.
Dusene Road, in the town, 20-year resident of Dusene Road, one of those cut-through streets that we've been hearing about. I remain concerned about the traffic impacts of this proposal. DOT recently expressed their own concerns about the impact of synchronizing the lights and, and impact of a timing change on congestion at this intersection. And I have a short excerpt that people may not be aware of, but the DOT has stated to the applicant, "Since all the signals are integrated, a simple timing change to the signal..."
Could you not read it in fast?
I'm sorry. "Since all of the signals are integrated, a simple timing change to the signal of Route 299 and Putt Corners may impact vehicle progression down the line. The analysis for the build versus no build suggests a large addition to the total delay for afternoon peak hours and Saturday peak hours for southbound traffic turning left off of Putt Corners Road. Afternoon peak hours for the build situation, i.e. CBS, appear to get worse for southbound and northbound traffic, making a congested intersection worse." That's from State DOT. I also hear talk with the, regarding the elimination of the slip lane, I hear, well, DOT has recommended that because of bicycle conflicts. I like Michael's idea of a bike lane, a bike path, excuse me, that could obviate the need to get rid of the slip lane to accommodate bicycles coming across. And also, your, your job, you don't need to take, this is a county road, it's not, it's not a state road, it's a state road 299, but the county road, Putt Corners, DOT may make a recommendation to eliminate that slip lane. Doesn't mean that you need to take that recommendation. Because as I stated at the last hearing, I'm a commuter to Poughkeepsie, I've been commuting on this road for 20 years, that's, I personally witness on a daily basis the value of that slip lane. And if you eliminate it, you're going to see traffic backups way down 299. So the planning board should not have to implement a recommendation like this without its own analysis. I'm interested in the planning board looking into the impacts on the local roads, you know, with the turn right only out onto North Putt and people getting, getting impatient with traffic and using Dusene and Mannheim and other roads. I think you should look at, and Harrington, look at the impact of tra, of this, the new traffic patterns that will be created by this proposal on those local roads. I also want to urge that you keep the public hearing open until, at least until your secret determination. Public has a right to weigh in on that. And I need to open my glasses now because I wrote some, some other notes. I'm concerned about the stream impacts on Tributary 13. We are making this community substantial investments in protecting several hundred acres of woods that Tributary 13 runs through, the Milbrook Preserve, and this could have an impact there. I want to echo the concerns about air pollution, the buffering that those woods provide for air and noise pollution is significant, and so I think that should be looked into further. And finally, I'm concerned about the impact on community character and our local economy, our chronically vacant storefronts, our three existing pharmacies. This should be a concern to the planning board, just as the proposed Walmart was to this very board back in the mid-'90s. Impact on community character and local economy was a significant part of the planning board's decision-making in that case, and the board worked very hard to come up with a finding that was fair to the applicant but also recognized the true impacts on community character and our local economy. And that should be the case here as well, that hard look. Thank you for all your hard work on this. It's, it makes for long evenings, but we very much appreciate it.
Thanks, Seth. Marissa?
It's Mari.
Maria? M-A-R-E-S-A.
Hi. My name is Marisa Valante. I'm speaking for two. First, I have a letter from Mark Porhtier.
Mark, say it again, spelled Western.
P-O-R-T-I-E-R. He'd like to say, "As a former village trustee and 15-year resident in New Paltz, I don't think we, as a community, place nearly enough economic value on what makes New Paltz unique. Our seasonal views, mountain ridge..."
Could you speak louder and slower? Should I?
Go ahead, start over.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, sure. "Our seasonal views, mountain ridge, hiking trails, and swimming pools will make this an attractive place to reside and visit for as long as we're willing to preserve them. Our gateway district is the threshold to this beauty and to the independently owned shops which comprise our vibrant downtown. Staying unique is the key to our long-term economic viability. When every other community has gone cookie cutter, we'll be the place they want to come visit and where they'll wish to reside. So hold the line on this proposal, planning board. It's not providing any goods or services we don't already have with no competition to go around. This proposal makes no use of retail space which already lies vacant, and if approved, it will become the signature landmark into our community. Please heed the serious environmental and zoning concerns being raised and the hundreds of petitioners in strong opposition to this project. Please fight to keep us unique. Thank you." I don't have anything to say that isn't different from what everybody else has said, except I just think it's an unnecessary irreversible destruction of a wooded area and it'll just be a hideous single-use business building with the sole purpose of lining the pockets of CVS without any consideration of place, and I think that's disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, anybody else? Oh, they're okay. Come on up, say your name.
In 2010, I was looking for a place to live and I looked in the area widely and there was a lovely long range house and I looked at it and then I listened. And the thruway noise was such that I turned around and left. And I made a habit after that of standing in the yard of whatever house I was looking at and trying to see if I could hear the thruway. Because for me, the, the natural environment is extremely important for my personal well-being. And I need that silence where I can hear the birds, where I can be in silence. And I came from a bigger house in another part of the state and I was looking around and knew I wanted to live in this area. But what I want to ask is if other people like me are looking for a place to live and they come to New Paltz, it matters what they see and what they hear. And if I had turned around and walked away from New Paltz, the town would have lost my tax revenues. When we talk about the economic impact of noise pollution or the economic impact of a, a building which is inconsistent with the, with the rest of the town, or we talk about the economic impact of long lines of traffic every day and more traffic, not just in that intersection, but also down Main Street, especially if they eliminate the slip lane, there's going to be a lot more traffic down Main Street. And they're going to be impatient, they want to go home. They're not going to be thinking kindly of the narrow section in the village and thinking kindly of, well, I would like to see that little shop. There will be an economic impact in ways that we need to really think about. It's not, it's not quite as cut and dried as it might look at first glance. So the noise and the traffic are to my two primary concerns. There are many other good concerns that have been brought up. I, I thank you all for holding this hearing and for allowing us all to speak, especially me, didn't sign up earlier. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
We appreciate it.
I got the one that...
I was on the list.
You were on the list, huh?
Yes. A little yellow piece of paper.
I got you there.
Go ahead.
Oh, I skipped Richard Miller. I apologize.
All right, I really want to thank you guys for spending the time on this project. What I'm hearing here is amazing, so there's nothing I have to add, except that I am an architect, I have a small business, I grew up in New Paltz, I've been here since '61 on and off, and I'm very sensitive to aesthetics and that's what I do, that's my business as well as the other items mentioned. And the character of this project is inappropriate for us, for our community, it's inappropriate to the gateway, it's, the look of the building is inappropriate, the scale is inappropriate, the environmental aspects are inappropriate, the site is inappropriate. Based on my professional review, just to date, without even all of the things Michael and Kitty and Susan and everyone mentioned, I, I don't see this happening. I don't, I don't feel that it's appropriate for the site, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I apologize for missing your name. Okay.
I'm a resident. Yes, Rousseau, R-U-S-S-O. I'm a town resident. And I want to thank you all for your service and for holding this additional public hearing. And I want to urge you to keep, as others have said, to keep public comment open on this project until the secret process is completed. At the last public hearing, Dave Lent commented that actions, actions that various municipal agencies have put into place over the years have managed to prevent the 299 Putt Corners intersection from becoming a bottleneck. But congestion aside, in the general geographic sense, it is akin to the neck of the bottle. All traffic coming from the east, all traffic coming from the thruway has to pass through the 299 Putt Corners intersection to enter New Paltz. This aspect makes this intersection distinct from all other intersections within the town confines and is the reason why extreme, extraordinary care must be given with regard to the treatment of the intersection in the circumstance of, of future development. And while I agree with Mr. Lent that the 299 Putt Corners intersection has not become bottler because respective agencies have worked together to, enough to, to prevent that, it remains problematic in its existing state. The Ulster County Transportation Council, final year 2035 Long Range Transportation Plan, Chapter Four, which is entitled Existing Conditions, page 14, says this about Route 299 in New Paltz. "In the village of New Paltz, the Route 299 corridor from the South Ohioville Road to State Route 32 slash 208 is currently problematic with nearly every intersection operating at LOS E or F. New York State DOT plans to make improvements to this corridor in 2016 to address capacity and safety issues as documented in the New Paltz Transportation and Land Use Plan completed in 20, in 2006." Now, just figuring out how to incorporate pedestrian and bicycle crossing into the intersection is a major challenge without the addition of two substantial retail businesses. The developers' comments suggest somehow that synchronized traffic lights will magically make everything okay, even after eliminating the right turn slip onto North Putt and incorporating bicycle and pedestrian crossings. But then they say, they also point out that the lights are already systematized from Putt Corners intersection to Mannheim, just not at different parts of the day. So their assertion seems tenuous at best. But once CBS and Five Guys are in there, there's no going back if that assertion was faulty. We're stuck with bottlenecks and gridlocks right at the entrance to the town. Was this synchronized, synchronized... Was this synchronization plan that they are asserting tested and proven with simulation software? And if so, what was the threshold where the model breaks down? What might work this year may not work, given a few more years. The Ulster County Transportation Council, final fiscal year 2014 to 2018 Transportation Improvement Program, on page 41, directs between $7.5 and $12 million to address the Route 299 safety and capacity issues that were identified in the 2006 New Paltz Transportation and Land Use Report, for work to be commenced in 2017. Those are two different reports that I've now named. And this same report identifies, it projects into 2035, and the worst intersection, the one that has the most deterioration in service, is the very intersection we're talking about. As in the past, municipal agencies have worked in concert with each other to prevent this intersection from being bottlenecked. That, let's not allow, let's continue that way of proceeding with things. Let's not allow the serious problems described in 2006 enslaved to be addressed from 2017 to 2020 to be compounded before the study and design stage is even underway. But let's let those improvements happen and deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else wishing to speak at this public hearing? Have a motion to close the public hearing for tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Any discussion?
I'm Lawrence Ferber, I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club Mid Hudson Group with a very brief memorandum from the Chair of the Mid Hudson Group that I was asked to read because he can't be here.
Erwin, we'll have time for public comment, okay? And at that time, you can give that comment. This is just a public hearing on CBS, I have to separate them out, okay? So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Okay, I want to thank you all for coming, I do appreciate it, it's lonely here sometimes. So it's nice to have a crowd. And the applicant is on the agenda for tonight, and we will have a discussion on that application later on. But we do have other things on our agenda that we have to take care of. With that, we usually have a public comment session, where people can raise issues or talk about things to the planning board that do not necessarily have the public hearing in place. So this time on the agenda, we have a public comment session. And Erwin, would be the proper time to get up and give your comment at this time?
We'll do that one. We just closed it for tonight, that was very specific. So this time, I did indeed get up. Like the other speakers, I made my deepest appreciation to the volunteers working in the service community and serving on the New Paltz Planning Board. And certainly, everyone in the Sierra Club respects the very important work that we do as well. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Sierra Club's Mid Hudson Group, there's about 1,400 Duce Town members that we represent. And I will read to you the resolution from the Sierra Club's Mid Hudson Group that was passed unanimously. This is from Joanne Steele, the Chair of the Executive Committee, she could not be here, and I was asked to read it on her behalf. "At the May 6, 2015 meeting of the Executive Committee of the Mid Hudson Sierra Club, the following resolution was voted unanimously. Whereas the various projects that together constitute the testimonial gateway development are extremely complex and pose significant environmental concerns, be it resolved that the Mid Hudson Sierra Club reaffirms its position of June 2014, calling upon the New Paltz Planning Board to issue a positive declaration requiring a comprehensive environmental impact statement on all of the various projects associated with this development. Signed, Joanne Steele, Chair." Thank you for your attention for this. I just wanted to make a very brief observation of my own, not officially one that is endorsed by any organization, and that has to do with an aspect of issues previously discussed about the CBS proposal that also involved the massive development project being proposed by the Mohawk Preserve. And that specifically has to do with the findings in the report that had been given to Yugut people on the New Paltz Planning Board from the Environmental Conservation Board last year. And one of the points that was called attention to by the then Chair of that ECB, Norm Turner, who sadly is now deceased, but the point is that there was a very powerful observation there that has to do with public health that I don't believe has been clearly or adequately addressed so far. And that has to do with the very significant threat to air quality arising from more and more traffic gridlock, more and more people driving to and from the village slowed down because of more attractions, whether they are from CBS or from the massive construction, partly that's already happened with campgrounds, partly that is now in the proposal stage and open to much controversy. But the fact is that I'm talking now for myself, really, as someone who is the father to two daughters going through the New Paltz Central Schools, both of them had rather serious asthma problems. And I want to mention that other families and other parents all over the country are facing more and more asthma problems, and many toxicologists and allergists point out that air pollution is a significant contributing factor, a trigger mechanism, and something that sometimes is an underlying factor responsible for asthma. And one of the points made by Chair Norm Turner in the ECB report is that particularly on weekends, there's a significant spike in particulate matter, carbon monoxide, other noxious fumes arising from tremendous increases in traffic bottlenecks, gridlock, such as, which is not the immediate point he was talking about, what's impending if the CBS proposal goes through, or if the Mohawk Preserve proposal goes through, that I think are, in their own right, grave causes for concern. And again, as someone who had to live through daughters who suffered from asthma, unfortunately, we found good allergists around here who helped to remediate some of those problems, the simple fact is, we don't need to have in the town or the village of New Paltz more risks of more gridlock, especially on the weekends. And I would, in that connection, urge each member of the planning board to revisit the report that was submitted by the Environmental Conservation Commission for your attention. Again, thank you very much, and your work is truly exemplary.
Thanks, Erwin. Does anybody else wish to make any comments or any public comment?
I know you guys want to go home, but it's a very short, it's time to respond.
Your battery's still hanging in there, huh?
I was nominated as most indignant town board member, and so I carry my indignancy with me wherever I go. David Brower, who's head of the Sierra Club, would be turning over in his grave if he had heard that from him. I get weekly emails from Joanne Steele, who is the Chair of the local Mid Hudson Sierra Club. She never asked me how I felt about this memo. So I guess the four members of the Executive Committee signed it, but I don't think it represents the membership, so just want you to know that. The Mohawk Preserve, unlike CBS, encourages people not to come through New Paltz. Most of their trailheads are in Gardner. They tell people, "If you're coming from the city, go through Gardner, you'll avoid all the traffic." If you want to tell the Minnewaska State Park, Mohawk Mountain House, all of our businesses on the west side of the river, that they are the problem, when in fact, it is their green mountains that purify our air, we're just living in some sort of weird alternate universe. So people who go to Mohawk Preserve will by and large be going through Gardner, if they go to the website, if they're out-of-town visitors. Locals, thanks to the Mohawk Preserve and OSI, will be walking and using their bicycles. So Mohawk Preserve, you can walk, you can bike, you can go through Gardner. CBS, they want you to get off the throughway and idle your cars at homes.
Thank you, Kitty. Okay. You're next, Seth, okay?
You're here, huh?
Yep.
Good evening, Chair Calhoun, members of the New Paltz Planning Board, I'm Olin Simon. My husband and I have owned 122 Butterville Road in the intersection of Gate House at Butterville for eighteen years. We are planned by the Mohawk Preserve. I speak to the issue of personal decoration and a full independent professional environmental impact statement for the Mohawk Preserve project. It is frankly inconceivable that a project that this vote could be credibly approved without a full environmental impact statement. For one example, the dismissed report on traffic submitted by the Preserve's hired consultant is laughable to anyone who actually experiences New Paltz traffic through town and the village, without the impact of other projects under consideration, CBS and many others, and the replacement of the Wall Hill Bridge. But beyond that is the fact that the Preserve is desperately trying to get you to focus on only the most craft version of what it is that they have planned. Their actions since they first filed have failed deliberately to fully disclose their plans for the entire parcel, the combined impacts of other planned projects. The only way the board can attempt to evaluate the environmental impact of this project and for the public to have any faith in the process is for there to be what the law, in any event, requires, a full, comprehensive, independent environmental impact statement. It is for the future we care about, for the present and future generations, the character of New Paltz, and the quality of life for all of us. I thank you.
Thank you. Seth?
I'm having a deja vu moment. It's as though we're hearing about Marriott being proposed at Minnewaska State Park. There are apples and there are oranges, and I urge you to separate the two. Please don't equate a big-box development with a trailhead. What Mohawk Preserve is proposing is a trailhead. A trailhead is not going to bring significant numbers of people, additional people here to New Paltz. Those people are already coming to go to the ridge. If they find one parking lot is occupied, they'll find some other place, and they'll still be coming through town either way. It defies logic to think that people will come to New Paltz, "Oh, let's drive to New Paltz to experience the new trailhead." It's really, when you come down to it, it's a testimonial gateway, but it's basically a trailhead, they're developing 1% of the entire property. There's no comparison here. So I just want to provide that perspective on what's being proposed. This is not Marriott, this is not CBS, it's a trailhead. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Anybody else wish to speak? Or...
Someone just spoke about the 1%, but in this case, it's not like national news, that 1%. The 1% might be speaking of the giant project at the gateway, which is fairly minor. What affects me as a small businessperson and supporter of the Preserve is that I find, when I make donations, I like them to go to positive things. I'm on the bridge committee, I like to see things happen that are positive. I'm not fond of things that are negative. Yet I find that my donations are for lawyers, they're for, you know, these things that are asked for by people with agendas that just seem inordinate and so out of proportion. So I ask the board, who are under tremendous pressure almost at all times, to just not buckle, and as Seth McKee said, apples, oranges, you know, they're very different things. And some things grow well here, and some things do not. And I think what the Preserve is proposing is something that's going to fit, it's going to add to the character, not only of our community, but of the whole county and region. It seems like a direction that things are going here, from the Ashokin, linking up to Kingston, Walkway over to Hudson, this is all a continuum, and it doesn't seem to be a coincidence that it's happening, and it certainly doesn't seem bad, both as a businessperson, and as a user of the outdoor resources, and one who enjoys preserving as much of the resource as possible. And people have to look realistically, in order to preserve, sometimes you have to utilize as well. That doesn't mean utilize the whole thing. If you look at the footprints that CBS is proposing, it's quite a large footprint for the size of that project. And as was brought up, what the Preserve is proposing is 1% of the property. Seth, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir? Yep?
I hope I'm the last one.
I hope so too, but then again, I'm here all night, so...
I prepared everything, and you can read it at your lecture, I just couldn't resist telling you this last little part of what I had to say. I'm one of the officers of Citizens, John Don, and I just want to tell you one thing. The EIS that we're asking for is not a punishment, it's nothing bad, all we're asking for is answers to questions. It's a dialogue between developer and the public. That's all we're asking for, is a dialogue. We have, and 200, 300 people who's subscribed to our newsletter, have questions that we've been asking, we can't get any answers. We get obfuscation, we get accused of having an agenda, "Oh, we have this question." And that's what we'd like to hear. I think Congress probably would have had to stop. You can read it tomorrow when you wake up.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to make any public comments at this session? Hearing none, I'm going to close this session on public comment and try to get to our agenda. I do appreciate your patience and your attendance, thank you very much. First up on our agenda, Stacy. Welcome, Ms... Here, oh. Oops. You're on. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Okay, so we have on here is an accessory apartment.
Yes.
So, we have on here is an accessory apartment request on the agenda. Stacy's gone out back and...
I trust you all got my email yesterday?
So, that's the only, you got the picture, okay. Then, usually the things that we look for on these sites... Oh, there it is. Thank you. It's a long day. And will continue to be a long day. Got the picture of the house with the entrance. It appears to have adequate parking on it. Hey, which way you want to park in? Park in there?
Right, this is the front of the house. This is the driveway here. And there's also a driveway that comes around the side here. Okay, this is a gravel driveway. This is a two-car garage. And the driveway comes down to North Ohioville. Yeah, there's plenty of parking. She's got a two-car garage, plus she's got no parking, probably ten cars out there.
And the entrance to the, let me just pull this. This is the entrance to the, we'll be back, back here. It'll be the bottom floor, right?
Mm-hmm.
And on it. Is it code or what? We have lights on that entrance, right?
Yes, actually, this little piece right here, this is a very small light pole. It's got like one of those...
Chandelier lights.
It's just a little light pole, but it's got one light pole.
Mole in it, yep.
It's nothing of significance.
Incandescent there.
It's incandescent, but it's a...
Candelabra bulb type?
A candelabra bulb.
Anybody have, um, hey?
Right, it does meet all the requirements. It's owner occupied, it's self-contained. You know, she's not creating any exterior changes for the apartment as we go down the list. Within the 35%, it just makes it. And she's not adding any bedrooms, so we don't have to worry about the health department.
So, this storage is part of the house or part of the...
That storage is part of the house.
That's where I was getting at, okay.
Okay, so it's no exterior changes?
No.
Right.
I just had a question on the percentage, and that's been straightened out, so...
It has, it makes it by two and a half square feet. Actually, I'm fiddling that, I did that, so...
Lighting was the only other, and this is fine.
So, have a motion to grant a special use permit for an accessory apartment for me, Maria...
Plaero.
Plaero.
Good enough.
Good enough. Italian too, so give me some. At 239 North Ohioville Road. Want to make that motion?
Want to make that motion?
Why do we need a special use permit? It's still, it's against the state law.
Especially this was for an accessory apartment. That's why it's a special use. Yeah.
It's exempt from county review.
Yeah, it doesn't go to county. So, I guess Peter seconded it. I guess the mayor, Peter seconded. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor? You're not allowed to vote. It's only this side of the table. Okay, so, from a, from our perspective, you're approved. Now, you have to see Stacy about the necessary...
Yes.
The building permit, the recreation trust permit.
Right. Just sign right in the middle there. This, thank you for staying.
Thank you.
Joining our planning board meetings.
Thank you. Thank you. It was a lesson. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Stacy.
And before I run, home.
Home. Second one up on our list is the simplified site plan for...
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
No, you could do this later. You just want to let you know I have no objection.
No, we're going to do it now, okay?
You need me as a monitor.
Oh, you can.
Okay, okay. Have a seat. Basically, the simplified site plan that both looked at is you're coming in, modifying the former...
Blockbuster ready.
Right. Oh, Blockbuster, yeah.
I thought it was TCBY.
TCBY? No, that very...
No, TCB, he's right. It's just TCBY, it was Blockbuster.
Blockbuster. Okay. So, you're doing internal...
And then, one half of it is going to be a credit union? No, no, no.
Go ahead.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Wait, is one spot rented or no, or both?
Just one spot at this time.
And that's the credit union?
Correct.
The credit union's going to move across the street.
Correct.
I have to know that, you know. That's where I go. So, it's simplified site plan, subdividing approximately 1,900 square feet on it. And it's doing internal, there's nothing external going on with the building.
Is there more parking required for the additional business?
Says no.
No, I don't think there's any change in parking.
It's only the outside.
Square feet per space, we've still got the same space.
Space, yeah.
Is there an ATM?
I haven't seen their internal plans yet. They haven't submitted them to me for approval.
There's just lighting that happens. If it's outside, it must be inside.
I briefly spoke with someone from Hudson Heritage. They said they are going to have an ATM, but it will be inside.
The present one, the present one is inside now.
Similar to what they have now.
Right. Okay. All right. Does anybody, any members have any comments on it?
So, why does this come to us? Because it's a change of use or something? No.
No, it's not a change. It comes before us because it's a change of the site plan. But for the simple, we've created simplified site plans. It's a, look, if it's under 4,000 square feet, and it's minimal changes, why go through a whole site plan review that we do on it? So, this is what we've created in the town of New Paltz to handle projects like this, where there's modifications internally to a facility. And whether it needs it or not, generally, the building permit to Stacy and between Stacy and Davis, whether any major changes or impacts that have on it. And if we think there's an impact, then we'll go through site plan approval.
Is an additional bathroom considered an impact?
Will there be an additional bathroom?
You can have two bathrooms and still have two people using them.
Yeah, so...
The loading for retail is on square footage anyway.
So, a simplified site plan basically says to the building inspector, the planning board met, considered the above notice of intent to waive site plan approval, and authorize the waiver, or determine that the proposed activity needed a site plan review. Wish then it would come back to us. So, that's the two choices you have when you get a simplified site plan. But there's criteria, 4,000 square foot, and minimum changes that Davis and Stacy agree with. So, that's what comes. Okay? And this is all internal, so that's why. Okay, so, I motion to author waiver of the site plan, the simplified site plan for the proposed Hudson Heritage Credit Union Landlord Work Building Permit.
So, move.
There's a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Hi. Okay, I'd like to bring CBS up, or Hudson up, for a little discussion about what they submit, what they put together on Friday. And then, we're going to go and have a separate board discussion on where we are in the application and what we're going for. So, come on up, just, I just want to get an update on what you filed, what you gave us on Friday. I've been reading through. And where are you on, actually, some of this?
When we were here at the last meeting, which I guess was May 11th, at the, at that meeting when we sat here, you had asked us to prepare and submit certain information. One of those things was response to the DOT comment letter from earlier in the month. One was a response to comments on the credit manning of Landlord Traffic Consultants. And you had asked us to prepare a narrative of what were the traffic mitigation measures we were going to do to address any impacts in the project. And you'd also asked for a narrative about how we would go about doing the earthquake on the site, how the show would be brought in, and what would be done once we brought it to the site. We have submitted all that information. The DOT submitted one in before Friday, it was sent directly over to DOT. It went in before Friday. The other information was emailed over to the planning board secretary, I think either Sherrit or Public.
Friday.
Was it Friday, or PBS was sent over. So, the board is in receipt of all that information.
Yes.
And I was here for the last two hours and listened to the comments from the public. And I have to say to the board, I heard nothing new. I understand people have concerns. I hear them. They were either exact or very similar to the concerns we heard back at the 11th public hearing. And based upon that, based upon the fact that we have given the board the information that they asked for, I see no reason sitting here today that the public hearing should have been closed.
Just to pause on that, I wonder if we could just kind of go through the equation, and then maybe have a board discussion about that.
Well, I'd like to continue to make my point, if I can, please. And that is that first, you know, I'm not trying to be adversarial about it. It's just that, you know, in order to move the process along and get to a vote on the project, one way or the other, well, one way or the other. You know, the public hearing for this project was not a mandatory public hearing, unlike a subdivision. And so, the board did decide to open up a public hearing. We did that. We advertised for it. We've had a session on it, we've had two sessions on it. And probably heard, probably seven hours worth of testimony. And it's all basically the same concerns. You know, it's not a, it's not a popularity contest. I don't expect to win over everyone in the town on this project. And the board is free to take in public comments so they know what issues they should be considering. But the board is limited to certain issues. Those are land use issues and secret issues that the board has to decide on in deciding on this project.
Even though I don't feel that we should get into a discussion about this, I actually kept a count of how many people spoke today and how many were repeats. I think it's accurate. I counted about, it looks like 29 or 30 people who spoke today with about six people who spoke at the last meeting. And I think, you know, there was significant new information. It's enormously helpful for me as a board member. So, just to throw that out there. But again, I don't know if we should go back and forth about this forever.
No, no. All I would like to do is just go, all right, this time, what you've presented, what you've put together, what you still have outstanding, what you think you have outstanding, would be helpful for us to know. If you heard any feedback, because like I said, a lot of things, especially on synchronization and the files, hinge on DOT's response to them. So, just really, from where we were, and when you set the stuff out, when you wrote it up, sent it to them. Any feedback, anything going on with them now?
I could give you an update, Chairman. The DOT has continued to review the information. We've had some discussions with them just for clarifications and other information. We relayed some of the feedback relative to concerns on the right turn lane. One of the things, and we haven't seen their summary yet, but one of the reasons why they've suggested removing the slip lane, as it's referred to, is because of some of the accidents that occur. You know, forgetting about CBS that are there today. Number two is to deal with pedestrian movements. And again, regardless of CBS, the treatment that they've asked for relative to that bike lane is actually more costly to CBS than the alternative where you keep the bike lane along the outside of the shoulder. So, they're still weighing that. They're not taking any of it lightly, so that's why they're continuing to review it. In terms of the timing patterns, several of those signals are already coordinated, okay? But they don't have as many timing patterns in place as seem to occur. Different times of the day, you need to have better, more efficient patterns. So, what we've given them is all the files so that they can work with it and kind of tweak it and see, you know, what is the best scenario for different hours of the day. In terms of the tying of the thruway ramp to better coordinate that, even though you have, you can see the antennas out there where the coordination is in place. The thruway ramp coordination is still not really finalized, you know, for more discussions with them. So, that they, they seem to have the system from North Putt Corners over coordinated.
Going west, North Putt, going Stop &amp; Shop, and going that way, they have some coordination.
And when, you know, when Stop &amp; Shop did the improvements there, we include the antenna and some of the coordination equipment. So, they've been, you know, putting the pieces together. In terms of the other comments, we've given them all the responses. They're going through, and we're hoping that they'll have a response within the next week or so.
Just a question.
Yeah, with the long weekend, they weren't able to really finish up this week.
Yeah, I just wanted to get where they are. When we talk about coordination of traffic lines, is any coordination, any capability on the South Ohioville 299, does that have the ability to be coordinated with it?
Well, not yet, okay.
They need additional equipment?
They need additional equipment.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just looking...
And we're actually working on that with the other projects.
That's why I'm just, you know, this, all three, they have to work together.
Absolutely.
And what I would look from DOT is something to the effect that, yes, we can get them to coordinate. Here's the files that match everything up. And when I see the other application, it says, yeah, this does work for them.
One other item that we discussed with them at, at the last meeting I was at, there was some talk about, you know, could we get a double left turn off of North Putt Corners onto 299? And, you know, their initial reaction was because of the way the volumes are there. One option would be to basically split the phasing and have a left turn. And then, this lane that now handles through and rights, that has to stay where it is because of the alignment on the other side of the intersection. But one option was to have a left, and then make... One option was to have a left and then make this a left through right. So in the morning, that's helpful, but the problem is in other hours of the day, you start looking at, you know, volumes, and again, regardless of the additional traffic from CBS, you have some decent volumes making right turns out to 299. So at this point in time, that doesn't look like that would occur. But we, you know, we looked at it as an option to see if it would help, but that was a concern.
Are you saying that it wouldn't help, or you're saying it would help?
No, because once you have to have a double left.
No, no, but you was talking about, so making this a left, right?
This is, this is a left, and then this would be a left through right. Once you have two lanes of left turning traffic, you have to stop the opposing traffic. So you end up splitting the, the phase out, and they felt that, you know, based on the volumes that are there today, at least first glance, wouldn't help the intersection. So, that's another thing that's in the equation of, you know, what works best.
I have another.
In terms of, in terms of the slip lane, there was a meeting with emergency services that I think there was some comment to keep back from today. And one of the things he asked us to look at was the ability of large vehicles to make the turn if the slip lane is removed. We're not changing the radius on the outside edge. So, in some respects, it actually would make, for a large vehicle like a WB 62 or WB 67, would actually make that turn easier because, I've just showed this on the aerial, this is where your, your channelization is for this slip lane today. It would actually, once that's taken out, allow the same pavement for that turn. So, we'll, we'll submit this, we just received that comment today, but we're not planning on changing the outside edge of the shoulder or the pavement here, so that would remain. It was just, again, DOT suggesting to remove this, that it would accommodate better the bicyclists, you know, and, you know, both for the future, and then when the pedestrian crossings go in, it would alleviate that. The other thing that happens with this, I know there was concern about backing up, once you take out the slip lane, it will still operate when 299 traffic is moving. It will operate when the left turn southbound on South Putt Corners, because we have an overlap, so there'll be a new signal installed. It won't be continuous flow the way it is today. Apparently, and we saw in some of the accidents that they provided, there were some accidents as a result of the slip lane because you have traffic proceeding off of 299 or coming from South Putt Corners Road, and there were some accidents as a result of that. So I think they're still, you know, digesting that, but based on the accidents and looking at how this would function, DOT's position was, it's better to remove that.
What's your rate of accidents? What, what's your rate of accidents?
I, I think there were about half a dozen.
A year?
No, there were half a dozen rear end accidents, which seemed to occur there. The actual rate, I don't know if I have that here with me, but I can get you the rates. We have the, all the data for the last three years, the most recent three years. And I think there were 27 accidents at the intersection.
Due to the slip lane from somebody coming straight up from South Putt?
No, they, these were total accidents. I believe there were six that were classified as rear ends. A portion of those were people in that right turn slip lane, and then stopping because traffic was coming along the Putt Corners there.
Now, what about the idea that was brought up tonight as a new idea? To keep the slip lane and do a bike path through the site?
I, I, again, that would be probably cheaper from our perspective in terms of road workout here. That's the first I'm hearing that. I don't think the elimination of the slip lamp ramp is entirely because of bicycles. It's accidents, it's a combination of everything. If it was the bike, it was, it was just to deal with bicyclists, I think maybe we'd have to look at that more detail. But that isn't the whole rationale behind eliminating that.
Now, when DOT does their, their study and give you their recommendations, are they looking at the current situation now, or are they focused around 10, 15 years?
Both. They're, they're looking at current conditions, what happened as a result of background traffic and other development, and then what our impact is of our additional traffic from CBS and from five guys. So they're looking at it in the future. Now, separate and apart, you have the corridor improvements, which I think it's next year that they're, they're getting into design, which really looks at the whole stretch in the village.
So conceivably, what improvements they're looking at to do in this section could be changed with the 2016?
Yes, I think the answer is yes, but what they're also trying to do is, since we're at the table now, if they can get us to do certain improvements, and then they can build on that. I mean, they don't like to have an applicant do improvements and then rip them out. So, I think that's part of why they're taking a little longer in their review, even though those, the rest of the plans aren't finalized. Because they're just, they have, they're starting preliminary design, I think, next year. They're gonna make sure that what they asked us to do, those are gonna be ripped out.
So, basically, they're gonna make recommendations that within a year could be worthless because of the, uh, and it, not, I'm not picking on CBS.
Absolutely.
DOT, DOT is notoriously short sighted. And so, how are the traffic circulation systems about with the perfect example? So what I'm asking is, is that the county, DPW, and the DOT needs to be involved now
Absolutely.
before we do everything, and then they need to come up with a plan that's gonna be acceptable in 2016, 2020. And it's no, no reflection on CBS, it's whoever does that, because that is, that is a, a, a bad site.
Well, I, I think we have to, from a DOT point of view, is whatever their forward plans for the corridor are, in a conceptual, maybe that will lead out to design engineering, design stages now. Or what they're, they're not gonna let anybody do anything that will impact those conceptual plans going forward. To the extent they have somebody coming in and asking to do something on 299, whatever they're gonna do is gonna fit into that conceptual plan. And I would expect, I mean, from a design point of view, that's what you want to do. And I know they have, you know, plans, DPW's got plans on Putt Corners already, so. Yeah, it'd be nice to see if we can get all, what it looks like together. On it, it's just getting everybody on the same page and making sure we're not doing something that in kind, in, in opposition to one of the agencies on that. But there are more changes to that corner than the slip lane and the right turn lane going on.
I have another question, if you don't mind. I, I know I have asked before, and you said, I think you said it was the state that wouldn't allow the exit on 299. They wouldn't allow it, or they recommended that you not do it?
I think the question that was asked was to not have access to all, to North Putt Corners Road, but have entry and exit onto 299.
Well, that was tonight, but, but, you know, it's been on my mind as well. Why we can't have an exit onto 299, even if, I mean, what I'm looking at is this that got sent out to us, right? So the entrance is here, right?
And I think you said, see if we can at least get a right turn exit.
Right, a right turn.
I think it was your comment, see if we can get a right turn exit, going back towards the village.
I mean, that would just help so much.
I, I think.
Even if it was all the way down here.
Comments about it, but I think the concern was that then you're creating a weaving section, exiting, and at the same time you want, that people want to walk down Putt Corners Road. So, their initial recommendation was no exit. As a developer standpoint, at CBS, they try to get as many movements as possible.
I'd rather see an exit there than an exit on North Putt.
Well, you see, you know what DOT is saying, the problem is, you exit on the right turn lane.
Yes, no, I understand.
You're exiting here, and then you're creating a weaving section, because if those people exit and wanna either get across to go to South Putt Corners or cross 299, you're creating a, an uncontrolled weaving section. That's what.
But if you're going downtown?
Yes.
Or?
That would be coming straight across 299, heading westbound, once you left here. But you have to cross the traffic that you wanna keep moving in.
Well, you're gonna be doing that on, on, on the other one also. I mean, that's exactly what's happening there, and sometimes the traffic is worse.
But the difference is, on, on North Putt Corners, we have a single lane northbound. On 299 here, you'd be crossing, if you wanted to get over to make a left on South Putt Corners, you would have to pick, cross over the right turn lane, the through lane, and then get into the left turn lane, so.
That's what you have to do on North Putt also if you wanna turn left. If you wanna turn left, exiting on North Putt, you have to cross over. And if you wanna cross over and turn right and go downtown, you have to do the same thing.
Right, but in, in this case here, the volumes are double the volumes on North Putt Corners Road. That's what their rationale is, so. I mean, we can have that question asked again, or maybe, I know your consultant's not here tonight, but maybe have him ask the question. Because sometimes when DOT thinks that we're asking for it, is to try to get something for the developer. As I said, the developers usually, you know, because the developer is trying to please the tenant that goes in here, they would love to have that right turn out.
I mean, that would eliminate
Understood.
more than half of the people that are exiting on North Putt and turning right and going downtown.
I mean, you may wanna ask your consultant to.
The flip side of that, and the one I caution, Lowe's has an entrance off 299, but does not have an exit off 299. And that is only, gets into a single lane. So I think that's what DOT is telling everybody, is you can come off it, if you're not getting back on it, you're gonna use the side streets.
We, we actually tried to get an exit for Lowe's or Axon when it was prior to Lowe's. And DOT would not allow that on that site. And we even had more distance.
I know, it was a much better style on that one, but.
You had our initial meetings to DOT that they were restricting us to this right in only.
Well, I mean.
But I can give you this question, I think maybe, you know, rather than have your consultant ask DOT the question again.
I gotta tell on the list, we'll put it on the list.
The other thing is, can you, can someone explain about that pad? I mean, I think this story.
Okay, let me, let me, let me, yeah, it came before yours. One of the things the planning board has to do when you look at a site is said, what is the buildout of that site look like, or what possibly think? Because you don't wanna design something or build something in there that would hinder maybe an expansion of it, or put something in that may be used in, in the future. So we always ask for, for a new site, show me where you could possibly put anything in the building. It's just from a, a, a planning perspective to say, build out the site, and, so we know. You know, because if, if you have a traffic pattern in the CBS parking lot, and that the next building that they wanted to put in really made that traffic pattern a lot worse, we wanted to know that in our design, so we had, generally ask for a build out of the site. So, at that time, they gave us a build out of the site by putting a pad up there. They had the gas station, the gas station went away, so we had two pads. And then they came back with the five guys in that pad number two, but that's, we asked for that build out.
Okay, so my question is, there's the possibility of that build out.
It's not part of this application.
So would that be, so then would that be a form of, I guess I'm asking our lawyer, segmentation, and I'll consider that fully?
Segmentation is if you divide up an action. It is contemplated by a draft or group. So if there was a.
But if there's gonna be more impacts in the future?
You would analyze those at the time the specific proposal was presented.
At the present time, we do not have that in the study.
Are you contemplating, do you have any idea what kind of terms you would want in there?
No, no.
Again, from our point of view, we wanna know if you could do, where, where you could possibly put anything else on that site.
So then, let me ask you a question. If we were to use that proposed site pad, should DOT be informed and, and figure in the.
If, 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 and again, whatever that if is, if a retail building came into that site, it would have to go through everything that we're going through now. It is a site application, it's a modification of the site. We do a traffic study. We talk about water and sewer. You know, and parking, everything that's associated with it. It's a change in site. If you notice Burger King, I don't really date myself on that one. We looked at development of that site, including that back parcel that it's gotta be 20 years plus? Has never been developed.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, and I wanna date myself, okay? But, we looked at a development of, of pad back there, of what could be developed back there to ensure that the traffic layout, the pattern, driving, parking, et cetera, et cetera, could accommodate that or was not impacting that for it. So it's just from a planning perspective, you don't, just like you were asking before, you don't wanna build something that screws up your lot drastically, and then you have some cockamamie way of getting vehicles in and out in an unsafe condition.
Okay, but let me ask this, would there be harm in looking at this with the entire, since obviously the intent is to have the third pad developed, would there be harm in looking at this considering all those impacts? Because that, it just, how could that hurt things? I mean, it seems like it would just make sense.
Is it based, is that third pad based on square footage? I mean, that like, this is how many square foot we can have? If we have CBS, this many square foot, that many square foot, and that's quite percentage of.
Site that could fit on that site, but without knowing what that, what that use is gonna be, you can't predict things like traffic can, you know, you give it to traffic, you give it to.
It could be, it could be, quote, it could be McDonald's or a doctor's office.
Or a visitor, or a visitor's center.
Or a visitor's center.
But it did comply with the zoning regulations.
That, that's, yeah, that was the other thing too.
What I'm questioning, and I'm not questioning what's going in there, but I, I guess communities have a, a, a way of being reactive instead of proactive. And, and then, you know, you said, well, then DOT will revisit it again. Well, by that time, they spent $60 million in something that they're gonna have to redesign, not only because of this project, if there's another hotel. I, I, I mean, somewhere's along the line, DOT has gotta look down the road, say, how are we gonna fix this problem for X number of years?
Well, one thing they do do, and Phil can correct me if I'm wrong, but they look at the zoning for the property as they go through, so that the undeveloped parcels are considered at some reasonable amount of buildout or development potential. And they look to see whether that can be accommodated with the existing improvements or whether something different is required. So when they go through this intersection, they should look and see there is undeveloped land there, there is undeveloped land down South Putt, those are potential developments, they look at the zoning, and they attempt to approximate what kind of development might be contemplated over the buildout of the group. Generally, what you would expect of?
Correct. And I think the, I, it's been a while since I went through, but in the projections that were done in the county study, there were projections to 2035, I think, which is, was the basis for DOT project that will start next year. And I believe they looked at the vacant lands. When DOT goes through their analysis, they, because they have all these studies that come in for proposed developments, they use that, and then on top of it, they look at the remaining lands and what the zoning is when they look at the growth factor beyond that point. So, you know, they don't just discount it, I think, they take a look at it as part of that structure.
Okay. What, have any questions for the applicant now, because I'd like to have our discussion?
Well, we, we do consider the application. Do we take into consideration that there will be a third business there at some point? And the impact that that third business would most likely have on the general area? What traffic, more parking, whatever?
But not knowing what it is, and knowing that any change to the site has to come before the planning. before the planning board.
Yeah.
Rather than speculate it, we generally, all we're saying is, and we did this with Putt Corners, with the generic impact, what's, what's a potential build-out of the site based on the zoning that we have there? So we can understand total impacts that would go on it, but we can put anything you want in there, and we could speculate back and forth about its impact on it. Like I said...
Anything we put in will have some impact, so it seems like we have to consider some impact, you know?
Be a plastic surgeon, doctor's office that has two cars coming in a day.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, right now, there's literally nothing. Someday, they're hoping there will be something, and, you know, I know they'll have to come back in. I'm just arguing for looking at something, including, including that as a thought.
Well, I think, I think those things come into effect when the, the growth rates that sort of shown on the development that DOT puts in, or 1% that we have increase in traffic going, oh, 1%, 1% a year, I think they're talking about. Those are the things that take into, you know, and if everything was all built out and you couldn't tear down a building and all that, you probably wouldn't use 1%.
Well, that's just traffic though.
Well, that's the cars using up and down roads.
Yeah, I'm talking about all impacts, but yeah, okay.
So there is some consideration.
I suggest there's like, there's a metal level, and then there's a more specific level that you look at with these things. If you look at the movement going out and turning, making that left turn, there's probably some capacity limitation that you can get up to. If you're at that point now, any future development is going to impact in a way that can't be accommodated. That's, that's sort of like a sensitivity analysis. There's clearly gonna be a problem if you do anything else there. And that's, may or may not be the case, but that's the kind of thing you can do, looking at it broad brush, right now, to figure out
Okay.
if that movement's gonna be an issue. But when you're looking down the whole corridor to see what DOT's gotta consider, I think it is taken into account in the background analysis that they do, they take the specific projects, they look at general growth, they look at zoning, and they try to come up with an approximation of what you can expect.
But again, I'm not just talking about traffic impacts, I'm just talking about overall impacts, just so I can keep it in our mind, because this is a, yeah, that's, yeah. Okay, anyway, I just have, I guess, well, I have a bunch of things, but I'll just ask two things of the applicant right now. One, let me know if we have this information, I'm sorry. Does the crash, does the traffic study information we have, does that include like a, like a three-year crash analysis that involves pedestrians and cyclists, or just auto?
It's all, all reported accidents. What happens is, we put in a request to DOT, which has the information from DMV, so any accidents that's reported
Okay.
is included in that database.
Is that accidents with between like, well, yeah, okay, all right, all right.
Everything, you know, vehicles, pedestrians, animals, everything.
And does that go down to Henry W.?
To be honest with you, I forget how far we went, I think it did. I think we covered everything along 299, from the throughway, the man hive, and then on North Putt Corners up to Henry Dubois.
Okay. And I don't know if maybe we talked about this, I know I wasn't there at that one meeting, that Dubois has a, has a truck restriction? We talked about that, and how maybe we could write that into the site plan, how, because there's gonna be so many trucks coming down there, and how the deliveries can't be made down, going through there? No one's brought that?
I mean, we didn't, we didn't define any particular truck route, pulling route. Is there are restrictions on Henry W. obviously you have to...
I don't care whether it's a weight restriction, I think it's a weight restriction, and then no truck, through truck traffic.
So that'll be something that will be added in?
Well, if it's, if it's...
I know, because there's...
And it's a good point to put out.
I know, because there's so many, you know, we see a lot of trucks down there, is all I'm saying, it'd just be good to reiterate that.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, same thing.
So as long as the trucks can get out, back out.
That's what I'm saying, a lot of people violate. Okay, I think we brought this up a long time ago, but since we're talking about traffic and parking and things, I think someone said at a public hearing, I don't know if it was this one, that because the parking is gonna be shared between the two businesses, what about not needing the parking requirements for each business, which I know would require variance, but I bet this board would be very open to. Notice my lovely smile.
You're talking about like, shared, shared parking?
Yeah, like less parking, yeah, reducing the parking, because the parking would be shared. I know the parking needs the zoning.
There's a formula that you can use for shared parking, that you can determine the number of spaces for restaurants and pharmacies.
What's the advantage of that?
Less parking.
It'll reduce the number of spaces.
So the, and more trees, and more trees, not more square footage to be developed?
Yeah, just less of a footprint, let's say, yeah.
Is the mechanism, excuse me, is the mechanism of that variance as, as you're...
I think there may be something, something, if there is authority for the board to reduce it.
The Urban Land Institute has those tables, which you can go right through. Does the board use land banking of spaces?
Sometimes. We do, we have done that.
Yeah, we have done, done that too.
But you would, you would show what you can provide, and then propose to hold back some.
I just have one.
I don't know if it's something that we need to talk about here or after, but what about an economic impact study?
Let's talk about that afterwards.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Ben.
Somebody tonight brought up a point that I don't think anybody had ever brought up for, like, do we know how this is going to look from the throughway? Has there been any drawings or renderings of actual, like, cars going south on the throughway, and it's looking at the five guys, CVS, like, what it will look like coming, coming down from Kingston to Passer Byer?
The other visual that, the visual we prepared and submitted was looking kind of like from Sanogo across the street in that intersection.
Right.
The other one that we're preparing is coming over the overpass, the throughway overpass, looking at the site. So that is something that we are working on to, to provide to the, to the board. That's something that I think the county and the nation have in their memo, and also the chairman here has brought that up.
Everybody talks about the gateway, I just wanted to see what the gateway looked like when you drove over, well, you know, came out off the throughway and came across.
Yeah, but what about the, the view from the throughway?
Well, I think we'll see.
We'll be in the photo essentially, with the corner, sort of the side view there, the frontage of 299 coming westbound on 299.
It's still, it's still a different view over here, you're, you're much further down than you're looking at. Do you have any...
You still have, you still have a vote.
I think one of the things, one of, yeah, one of the things coming over the throughway is a longer span, because you're gonna be staring at it. Driving down the throughway at 65 miles an hour, you probably have a second, a second and a half, yeah, that's what you're gonna see.
I think you can be able to see the side view.
Well, that's what, yeah, I think we're looking at it, we'll take a look at that when we...
Well, also, going south, you have a much longer view when you go south from closing down. You can look at it from, especially with slow traffic, you can look at it for five minutes.
Well, one of, one of the things, yeah, oh, yeah, especially having a holiday weekend, yeah, it can back all the way up, understandable. I, I think a couple of things that I just want you to consider or think about going forward is, one is looking at the site and what, if we're not doing anything on the back of that site, besides tearing down the house, do we leave it alone? Is there anything, there's no need to clear or maintain, do anything on it.
I think the plans are to clear.
Right?
Oh, no, no, there's, there's nothing, nothing beyond...
Nothing beyond that.
...proposed development that we need to do, including our separate systems and whatnot, we're not, we're not clearing out that, that other part.
And, and, and the other part that I, that I have is, is, and again, I think we touched on it, I think it was in your memo on the earth movers on it, is that, I'll call it the throughway buffer, the soap, the fill, how we're bufferinging that area out, any which way. I, I, I read it only once, I might have missed it, but, you know, we're raising it here, and, you know, the issue came up, and I was thinking generally about it, and, and what we're doing on, on, really at the interconnection of the throughway there. And just probably need some little bit more information on that.
In, in what sense?
In sense, where we are now on the throughway, and, and what it would look like subsequent to the fill, and do we have any steep slopes, any erosion problems, or anything that we could buffer?
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that's, in the memo, that's, that's how we proposed to, to fill in the site, we want from that eastern boundary with the throughway, and work westward into the site, because that is where we have the slope coming up. We have full erosion, except patrol plan that we would need to establish. As we go through this process, we are stabilizing, we have fabric and mats that we will put on slopes for stabilization, obviously vegetative implementation's gonna be put into place so that we, we hold soil on the site. I mean, we're adjacent to, we're surrounded by county and state roads on the throughway here, so we definitely do not want anything flowing off the site by any means, you know, so we, we think that we have a, a pretty well-thought-out process that we gave to you, as well as our plan, that I think is pretty comprehensive to, to maintain.
Like I said, it was a busy weekend on a number of other issues on it.
No, no.
Let me look through that again, and then look at the site plan again on that one on it. Lyle, do you have anything?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about, if I'm reading it right, it seems like the driveway on North Putt is 350 feet from the intersection.
Yeah, it's roughly 350.
350, so at 45 miles an hour, that's five seconds from the intersection. So you have a driveway pulling out, you gotta make a left turn, cross traffic. After you look, you got five seconds, so I'm thinking, left, right, step on the gas, you've used up two and a half, three seconds.
Saying, looking back towards 299.
Yeah, yeah, so you, you only, you've got split seconds there. If, if somebody's coming, has a green light going north
North, on south.
on North Putt Corners, they topped that thing, you're saying the visibility is 500 feet. That's a little bit deceptive, because the slope drops off 4% on the other side, so a vehicle would have to be eight foot tall to see it at 500 feet.
The 500 feet we were also referring to is, is looking north.
No, well, I was reading that you were saying it was looking south.
Right, looking south, but north of the driveway. You follow me?
Okay, but if you're coming up a hill, 4% grade, if you're sitting in a car, you're four feet off the ground, you're not gonna be able to see that driveway
Right.
when you're coming to the intersection. They're not gonna be able to see you unless you're eight feet tall at 500 feet.
We'll, we'll do, we'll show a profile, you know, a sightline profile, I thought, so we can...
I drew one right here, and I don't think it works, you know?
We'll, we'll show that.
The other thing is, it seems like that people, people are still gonna be making that right turn from the, from 299 on, on to North Putt.
Correct.
And so, when, when they're stopped there at the stop bar, I noticed this myself when you, when you do the channelized turn, when you go, the other cars are stopped at the stop bar, they're blocking your view of the cars coming on the, from South Putt across the intersection.
Right.
You know, looking in your mirror, looking over your shoulder, you've only got a split second there. You know, you just don't, you don't have much time.
Correct.
And so you're looking back at that, and, and you're approaching another, you're accelerating to get it to button in, and you're approaching the driveway where people are trying to cut across.
Right, you're talking about this movement
Yeah.
when you're looking to see someone coming up from the south.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's part of the reason why DOT wants to remove the continuous flow, and then it would be only under the signal control. So it would go in two out of the three phases, basically. So when this traffic is moving, you know, exclusive left, this would, this would go, and then with 299 traffic is moving, this would go. But when northbound traffic coming from South Putt Corners, this traffic would then have to stop as opposed to the free-flow movement that occurs today. I think that's one of the rationales, and one of the reasons that some of these accidents were occurring, is you're making that turn, you're kind of looking over your shoulder for traffic that's coming north from South Putt Corners Road. I think that's one of the reasons why DOT was making this recommendation to remove the slip lane.
Well, I can see that, that might make the intersection safer, but you still only have the 350 feet
Oh, understood.
in the intersection. I still think the driveway is very close, and, and it's gonna be a problem.
Understood.
But making a right turn rather than a slip lane means you go into the turn slower than you would at a slip lane. So those guys coming down 299, making a right turn down Putt Corners, will be a lot slower than the speed that I've been using going around that slip lane. So there may be some, a little bit, maybe another second gain there, but the visuals would be a good, good thing to, to provide. Any else, Lyle? Anything else out for the applicants?
You can provide us with a response to the other two emergency services?
I was, I was gonna mention, that was one of the other points the board made at the last meeting, so last Thursday, I did meet with Chief Weeks from the Fire Department, and one of his deputies, Ms. Rooney from the Rescue Squad, and then also Chief Snyder from the Police Department. So we met at the site, I supplied them with a, a site plan, and just kind of did a whole presentation of the proposed project to them. They really all asked, a lot of their, their questions or concerns dealt with traffic, so they, they asked for a copy of the traffic report, which I did send to them. Today, I think we, today, we just got a couple of comments from, from Chief Snyder.
Yeah, there were, there were three comments, one was about the, the right turn.
I saw that, but...
And then the, the second comment was about their feeling about the bicycle lane, you know, why build it now, planned for it, but why build it now if it's not continued? And, you know, it makes sense, I think DOT's logic was, well, we have an applicant here, get him to pay for it and build it. But again, that's, that was the second one. And then the third was the comment about the ability to exit the driveway on North Putt Corners when the traffic is queued up. So they've asked us to look at that further.
And the other two, the other two responses you've gone forward to?
Absolutely.
It won't send it any sooner.
We have to address it, so yes.
You're gonna dodge them.
Okay.
You gotta get them.
Anything else for the applicants?
Can I just clarify something? You talked to DOT when?
Yesterday, and I, with my associate, I'm not sure if he was able to get ahold of them today. We spoke to him yesterday.
Okay, so you haven't talked to Ken in a sense, you've talked to him.
Uh, no.
Because it would be good to get Ken...
Ken, Ken is, I guess, doing his review also, so we'll touch base with him.
Because it would be, you seem to be reporting on information you probably isn't aware of, and that would be useful to have him put that in his memo and report.
Absolutely. I think we'll, we'll try to do a three-way call, because they, they called us to ask for some information clarification, that's what started the discussion, that was yesterday.
The second question is, do you know if the DOT work program that starts in 2016 is looking at the design of the bike traveling along 299?
I don't know. I, I assume that it is, but I, I don't know, I haven't looked into it.
That seems to be an issue here, as to where this, you know, what we're connected to. It seems that if they are going to do something along those lines, whatever they do would probably make sense to...
Match with this.
Yes.
It's on the plans, whether it's 16 or 17, I'm not sure which. But they have indicated that, in town law, they're gonna complete the bike path from Tony Williams Park all the way out to roughly 299, I'll go up there. DOT has gone on record that they will complete the bike path from that spot into New Falls, meaning what I think is Putt Corners. How they get there is still to be decided, because they want to go north on Putt Corners, so they have to get from the south side of 299 to the north side of 299 somewhere. What is, and to, what is that they cross, that they go to Ohioville Road and then cross, and then come on the north side of... and then come on the north side of 299. That design and that final, how they're going to do that hasn't been decided yet. But they are on record to say they will continue the bike path. They told Mike Iron, they're going to continue the bike path from, you know, with the end of the one in Highland to New Falls.
And then it's going to go down to what?
Uh, then it stops there from DOT's point of view, because they don't know any more right away. So then it's DPW and the request back, refining the request that the town put in for money for Henry DeBois to go that rest of the way. So again, that's kind of the structure of the plans of the bike. I think I'm about right, right, Justin? Yeah, probably closer to it than I am. Okay, so that's what we're at on it. So that's, I'm not sure if they, you know, will finalize it, but I think they're leaving their options open as far as the design of where that bike lane goes. And they're just giving them, you guys, the standard answer where it is supposed to be from a generic center point of view.
Yeah, their comment has been not to impede any future development of that. So that's what we've been doing.
Okay.
So, well, I'm just thinking in terms of a condition that would provide some, if we're not, if we shouldn't build it now, we can defer the construction until DOT is ready and there can be a bond in that, some future day.
Yep. Same with the DPW one. Okay.
So what are we doing on the public hearing?
Board is going to discuss now. Mark and sales, a couple of issues that have been raised and a couple of things that we want to talk around ourselves on. So I'd ask you to sit in the audience and let us conjure.
You've heard my thoughts about it, so I won't repeat them at this late hour.
I understand.
Okay, really quick, for the benefit of the public and me, would you mind going through the timeline of where we're at with everything?
Okay. Generally, for site plans, what we do is gather the information, raise the questions that we want to raise. Depending on the applicant, the size of the site plan changes, we may or may not have a public hearing. And once we get all that information, I think we have all our answers, all the documents together, we will then go through a seeker determination. In that case, you know, it's basically walking down, you guys can move back.
Oh, good, you're starting your discussion, I wasn't sure.
I know, it's all right, people walked out on me. So, and we gathered the information on the different areas that deal with seeker. While we're looking at site plan, so we kind of do the things together. Well, once we have the information that we need for seeker determination, we then sit down and go through that and document the part two of the seeker determination. Going through whether it's a significant impact, whether it's a large, small, and.
More significant, yeah.
Yeah. And determine out of that, do we have any issues that have not been addressed? Or do we have anything that's on the seeker determination that we think is significant that we don't have information to be responsive to it? Now, sometimes you'll have something that's significant but does have a mitigation plan that says, you know, one of the questions, does it have water and sewer? And, you know, we have sites that don't have any. So the mitigation plan is that it will have its own well and septic. But that's what you put in on a report and to address that question on seeker determination. So we try to get through seeker determination while we're still tweaking, I'll go, looking at site plan issues to make sure that we don't do something on site plan that throws seeker off. So seeker is the first way we go on, on, once we have all the information complete, that we can answer the questions, then we go ahead and do a seeker determination.
So what's missing?
Well, I guess that's what we're talking about.
Well, right now, we've had a public hearing on it, issues have been raised. We have to go back in and take a look at, really, from a seeker point of view, the information that, walk through it. And George is going to talk about threshold levels of seeker, what triggers a look C? And whether we have information to address that. Generally speaking, I'll give you the simple one, you know, it wouldn't be a simple one, but a traffic report, a DOT sign off, a DPW sign off, or traffic consultant sign off would say you had all the information to be able to be responsive to the issues on traffic that are raised. Stormwater, groundwater, generally the SWIP will answer generally all the questions that are associated with that, for that. So we, so we know where the groundwater and surface water are based on the study report and reviewed by the town engineer. So those are things. Water and sewer are issues on seeker that we generally, either they're hooked up or they're not, got down a well or not. And if it's a large amount of water, we have testing that shows it can produce what it is, what they want. There are other areas, I don't have them all off the top of my head on it, but historical, paleontological, wild habitat, you know. All of those that we take a look at and address the questions that seeker raises as threshold levels about, did you examine that and yes or no, and at what level is it? So it's a walkthrough of it. And one of the things we've, we've been kind of burdened with a couple of large projects, but one of the things I wanted to do was just for people's comfort level is to walk through a determination of a seeker determination. And that's when George said, let's go over some thresholds and what seeker is looking for, what it is it means. I had a kick out of it. And one of the questions I used to remember was onsite storage of oil. And I think if it was, you know, okay, that's a good thing. But seeker says if it's onsite over 1,000 gallons of oil that's onsite, sorry, then you would have to check off that it has a significance. And then the applicant would have to address how he would mitigate any problems with that. But it's 1,000 gallons, it's not a 200 gallon oil tank that's in someone's basement. So those are kind of threshold levels that always come up on it. Anyway, we'll let George take care of seeker when he's, when we get to that. We'll go through the seeker process, determine that. Meanwhile, we're still going through site plan and looking at site plan determination on it. Once we've completed seeker, and generally for these things, it's up to and back from the county, once we've gone through the site plan, we generally come up with conditions associated with the approval process. George raised one of them, the question of posting a bond for work that should be done, not now, but in the future. We want to make sure that we have dollars in the bank that when the future comes up, that there's one there to pay for it.
What do you mean? What's seeker?
Stop and shop, when, in this, they predate, Stop and Shop had a, posted a bond because they needed modifications to the intersection of Jerry Hill. Okay, well, this went on and on and on because Central Hudson was involved in moving poles, Dunkin' Donut was involved because it was site there.
So modification, not development?
No, but they had to put in, put in a right turn lane on it. So it's, so we, a condition of approval, they had to post a bond to do that work once we got all the parties together.
How long did that take?
12 years, I'm not sure it's all.
Okay.
I have one other question.
Sure.
So do we wait for a seeker review before we can ask for expert opinions in other areas? Or are we, can we ask for expert?
If we, if we're going, and again, generally from a seeker determination, if you're going through something and you don't feel like you have the knowledge for it and you think you need expert on it. For instance, the traffic consultant, Ken doesn't come in on every site plan, but he does, or traffic consultant comes in for those large projects that have significant traffic issues. So he's our resident expert, he's our independent expert from the applicant on reviewing the traffic issues.
Well, this actually, you brought up a point that I wanted to bring up too, which is that, as people have said in the public hearing too, all the information we've received so far is from the applicant. And I wonder if we could talk about hiring a planning firm slash economic firm to kind of help us guide through this process a little bit more, since not all of us are planners, like a community focused planning firm. And also wetland inspector, Hudsonia, and that economic impact analysis I sent to the board that talk about tonight. I feel like we're getting misinformation, it's from the applicant. There's nothing preventing us from getting outside information that would help us out more, that would be a little bit more objective.
Okay, let me back up on that. We've gone through, you can look at the fiscal impact of a project on a town, which we did on Park Point.
Right, I also wanted an outside analysis.
What we did, we did hire an outside firm.
Well, not a full planner to guide us through the whole process.
So.
And not an environmental consultant, anyway.
Anyway, so you can look at a fiscal analysis of it. As far as the economic impact, I'll let George quote cases, but if it's a competitor that's coming in, unless it's going to cause dire.
Unless it's, I think, unless it's of a scale where there is going to be an impact of results that is an impact on land use, that's with Park Point. If you had a two bedrooms housing project come in, or a two unit housing project come in, it has some impact, but not to the point that you would say it's got to have fiscal impact. But with Park Point, what really created the fiscal impact is not the development per se, it was pilot.
And are we clear that there's going to be no pilot here?
Retail is not normally eligible for pilot. There's one.
I mean, Lowe's had, got a pilot. Lowe's had a pilot and I don't.
There may be, there may be, there is a circumstance in which you can say if there is no, trying to remember the turn of our, but it's when something isn't available in the community. Something along the line of Lowe's, I think you'd go and say, we don't have something like that, provides a resource for each community to good. I think one of the points that you certainly heard is there are pharmacies that exist that provide service.
But so that information that I sent around about if we, something that a planner could help us get these metrics about pharmaceutical impacts, and I forgot exactly the name of it, that you're saying that's not something, what, well, why can't, it would be like a $300 analysis that would tell us, like, you know, it's like planner specific, you know, information. What is the argument for not getting that information?
And for, it's great, for what? The purpose?
Well, because over and over again, in the public hearings, people tell us that what they want is small locally, you know, owned businesses. And if we can get economic impact analysis information saying that a town of this size can't support four pharmacies, wouldn't that be useful information for us in our review? I'm just asking a question.
Well, depends on the scope of, and the area that you're looking at and.
Well, New Falls would be the scope of the area.
Well, it's not New Falls. If you're looking at retail, it's larger than a town and a village for that. You know, the only place I've ever heard of in seeker determination, only time I've ever heard of economic impact is if a large mall came in and with a number of stores and decimated your downtown, you would have.
I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying, wouldn't it be good to have this information?
There's two things. One is whether the board believes it's something that the board should have as planning information about the community. The other is the extent to which it relates to an applicant. So you can, you can have a planner and they can do studies and provide this information. It's going to be on your dot, not the applicant's. You have to, in order to have that, you know, cost of the review, it's got to be something relevant to the review.
Well, this would be because it's specifically for pharmacies. But I guess what I want to know is, what would not be preferable about legally about getting that information to help us determine impact? Is there some, I'm just wondering, like, is there something?
Basically, the question you have to start that discussion with is, what do we authorize and consider? And how does come into our deliberations?
Yeah.
There is a general planning role that the planning board can play during the comprehensive plan. You can hire somebody, you work with the authorization of town board, that are someone to work on the comprehensive plan overall. You could have a focus on commercial development, you can fund those activities. And the result of that planning process can inform how the zoning takes place and how you implement the zoning, the extent the zoning provides for that. But you can't just go out and do a study and say, okay, we can only support three pharmacies, so we're going to pick these three.
I got that, yeah, I understand that. But all I'm saying is if, if it seems like so many people are coming to us and saying that's a significant impact, aren't we required to consider that?
Well, you can look at the site plan recommendations.
Yeah, I'm just throwing these things out there.
One of the other things I just want you all bear in mind is, we approve the footprints of the sites, the buildings themselves. Generally don't approve the tenant. What I mean by that is, if this building somewhere along the line doesn't become a CVS for one reason or another and becomes a Dollar General store. To the extent that it's a retail, it's the same use, it's a Dollar General store. So you can't always hinge on, I like that company, that's good to come here, I don't like that company.
You can't base a zoning determination solely upon ownership. You can't say, I like Mike's Pizza Place, but I don't like Charlie's Pizza Place. If there are pizza places that are equivalent, you can say, wants a fast food place?
But I don't think that's what we're saying, I think we're just looking at.
No, I just want you to be conscious, because a lot of people got up tonight and said, I don't like CVS as a corporate entity.
I agree that we don't have the jurisdiction to say you can't win.
I just want to get across that we don't have any say on whether it's CVS or Rite Aid or Dollar General or Family Dollar or what have you on that.
Moving on from that, like an environmental type we brought up about wetlands across the street. Now, previous meeting, it did say that drainage water was going from the site into that habitat. Now, I think that would trigger a wetland, at least a verification of what wetlands study from an expert, whether it's going to adversely affect across the street or what other.
Tom, just to bring you up to date, I went out and looked at the site. Spider is off, he's been off for quite a while.
Yeah, what, is he coming back, what's happening?
He's in rehab now, I understand, it's going to be a long time. So we're looking for other wetland inspectors. But this came up about wetlands on the site, so I wanted to do a site visit.
So we have no one who can, we have no wetland inspector, there's no backup. Our wetland inspector outlined because we developed everything in the town.
Could you finish your sentence?
Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
I looked at the site, there are no wetlands on that property, I can tell you that, there's actually rock outcrop on it, it's just not conducive to wetlands.
But the water, groundwater, can you send wetlands across the street?
I think we're not saying there, we're saying nearby.
There's a culvert that goes from under North Putt.
Really?
And that's going to take some water from part of Main Street, part of North Putt, plus the site, and that's going to be treated and discharged there. It has to be treated by the MS4, I think that was mentioned. The regulations require that the water quality treatment happen. The regulations now also require that there's a reduction in runoff, the volume runoff has to be reduced. There's three different bio-retention areas on the site, there's some infiltration chambers, there's, there's a lot going on on that site as far as stormwater, to be able to treat that, there's even separators that are being used.
So you're saying that the total water runoff has to be reduced from the site?
The volume. It used to be the rate, and now it's the rate and the volume, volume actually is reduced.
And the toxins have to be removed?
Absolutely.
So there's fewer toxins going in and out than before, or?
You're going to be actually treating some runoff from the pavement that was certainly not treated before, plus that site. You know, it's, it may be a little hard to believe, but there'll be less water going in to drip 13 from this site, and it'll also be cleaner than what's there right now.
That's, okay.
It's still discharging from the same watershed, it's not moving it somewhere else.
It's still in the same, still in the same.
And what, the difference is going into the groundwater?
It's going into the ground, it's treating it.
And the groundwater that's flowing, that's currently flowing.
Putting it back into the ground, which is much better than taking it off and.
But doesn't it generally flow down to strip 13?
Everything goes down to trip 13 and into.
So it's going in the same place and just getting there different?
No, some is sinking right into the ground and never leaving the site.
That's the reduction part, there's some that's still going.
There's still some that's going through.
They need North Putt.
So even though there are wetlands all around this site, no one thinks we should have a wetland inspector, who we don't even have, because he got lime, which is proven to be, comes from overdeveloping, anyway.
Augusta?
Just to say, I just want to be clear about this with us as a board.
We're looking for a wetland inspector, we're trying to get a list for Stacy to be able to pick from.
Okay.
But this information came up several times in the hearings about there's wetlands on the site, I couldn't believe it, I walked the site about five years ago with a, it was a shopping center, I forget what development that was going to go on the site, it didn't, didn't happen. The site, the house at the time was vacant, right now, that, we, the board should go out for a walk on that site, it's totally trashed.
Yeah. But all I'm saying is, just to harp on this again, I get that there's no wetlands on the site, but there are wetlands around the site.
And he just said, the water is being treated onsite.
I heard that, okay.
It's not being treated now.
All right, you've beaten me down, thanks, move on.
Top of the ridge that drains both ways.
That's another general issue which you can certainly find someone to look at, but the question is how it relates to the application, is what David's saying is.
Well, it's just intuitively, it's hard to comprehend that if you largely clear cut in the area and create a more imperious, imperious surface, then now all of a sudden you have less runoff.
It's really hard.
My guess would be, I bet at Dollar you'll have more runoff.
You won't. If you have more runoff, they are in violation of the permit. The way it's designed, they won't have more runoff. Volume has got to be reduced now, didn't used to be. Used to be just the rate, now it's the volume also.
That's what the pleasures of being an MS4 town now, like the village, we have too much imperious surface, so now the goal is to keep as much of it onsite as you can.
Sort of underground.
Can I just clarify the situation with the wetlands inspector? The wetlands inspector is an official, has to be appointed by a process defined in the code, but the wetlands law says, the wetlands inspector, the town engineer, or professional consultant hired by the planning board can advise the planning board of its responsibilities. So, you know, I mean, David is one of those people.
Gosh, I'm not doubting anything you're saying, I'm just doing my job over here.
Okay, well.
At the last meeting, you had, you said that, as the planning board, we could possibly write a letter that the architectural design of the building.
Yes.
Can we, can we?
Did you send my letter?
Can we just read the?
I did, and I, there's a couple of changes I need.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we're here.
But can we as a board do that, because?
Sure.
I don't see anything that.
Moving, moving which way, yes.
I mean, and they can do better, because they've done better.
Sure, no, I agree.
So do you guys want to get me your changes and incorporate that in the line?
I can give you a chance.
Yeah, no, I just sent, I think, yesterday, yeah.
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 Anyway.
You know, it's really the design thing that I will talk about a little bit more. I took a lot of time and I looked at CVSs all over the country, and there are some that are much more attractive than this one. And the color, the roof, the sign that has to be as big as the town will allow, I think that this applicant is, is in the right to ask us to, you know, do their development, but at the same time, I like to ask this applicant to be a good neighbor, and I think that there's a lot that they could be doing to make their formula fit into our community better. And I, I know that they said they don't really want to make any changes on that, they did a couple of changes, but it definitely wasn't as many changes as I had hoped for. And I'm hoping that we can, as a board, move them forward to go back to their architect, I'm sure they have another model, because they have so many different models to choose from, that perhaps they could project a different model to us, that might be a little bit more palatable to our community and to our board.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. So anyway.
Well, I think the design is going to be a big problem, because it's almost, I haven't met a person who has your license or something, it looks awful.
We got, we got to sign down to meet code, so.
Well, I don't know, doesn't mean approval.
And for me, it's, it's the color too.
Oh, I understand.
Like, you know, on all these islands and, and all these kind of resort types of areas where they have this weathered wood, and it just kind of doesn't stick out so much.
Yeah, no.
I like that look much better.
No, I drove through Woodstock this weekend, and they have a CVS, and it doesn't look bad, it looks like part of the community, the sign's about eight feet high, it fits right in the street along with the other businesses, and it has a sign that says CVS, it doesn't look bad.
I think that one was using a former building, right? I don't think it was built with a CVS.
I don't think they built it, I think it was a, but it fits right into the street.
To say, yeah, this isn't like, CVS does have different model buildings, for different locations on it, that still get to 13,000 square feet. They even have places where have brick buildings with roof lines that aren't flat.
Well, that's.
Yeah, we've heard, you know, I agree that, you know, that alluded to the CEO talking about the architectural review, community character of, that somebody at CVS should be taking a hard look at it, and that we're not happy with, with what's being presented here, and we don't know where the issue lies either with the developer or with the corporate. And, you know, it isn't like that we don't know there are other CVSs around our own area that we've seen. Yeah, we've been to Ryanbeck, we've been to Hyde Park, we've been to Woodstock, we, you know, so it's, it's, I'm not sure what triggers what, and I haven't gotten a good answer for, for it. But yes, we, we'll craft that up and put that together on.
Can I make one suggestion for that letter? It should somewhere in the first page reference the section, the standards of the code, which call for consideration of the proposed height, bulk, composition, materials, and architectural features of main and accessory buildings and their appropriateness and relationships of the site with one another, and areas devoted, adjoining areas. So I think that's the essence of what you're getting at, is that somehow it should fit.
And I could point out the medical center, I can point out Hampton Inn, I can point out also kind of Savings Bank as.
Even the mobile station has split.
Can we talk about?
Did I catch you people up to speed about where we're at least at on, the next step is really a seeker determination. As far as the public hearing, I would propose that since the, the information that the applicant came out to us on Friday, probably has not been reviewed by a number of people, that we continue the public hearing to the June 9th meeting, with the idea of closing it at the June 9th meeting, and then giving them 10 business days for any written comments. Go for it.
What, do you think that we're going to do seeker then? Is that kind of the idea, or?
The idea is to be able to go through a dry run of seeker by the.
The next meeting.
The last meeting in June or the first meeting in July. We don't have to finalize it there, but we certainly know what we do have and don't have, and then we can take what steps there. But what that will do is form out what's the remaining issues that we have that need to be addressed and documented at that, at that time.
Question for you, Mike, if we go back and they make significant changes to the architecture or significant changes, say like the condensing of parking, can we reopen the public hearing or can we schedule another public hearing down the road with the new?
Can I just throw in a point of information? Generally, when you have a public hearing issue, and there's discussion about what should be done or could be done, and it's discussed at the meeting as an option, if they come back and they change it to respond to that, and addresses the issues that were raised at the hearing, generally you don't have to go through it again. If they were to come back with a different thing, which wasn't considered at all, that might be something that you would want to look at from a standpoint of reopening the hearing.
Yeah, if they came back with a Hyde Park, and I haven't seen the Hyde Park, but they pitched a Hyde Park CVS one, I think, as George was saying, they addressed the issues that we were bringing up.
You know, and I just wanted to add something, you know, when we're talking about the shared parking, to cut down some of the spots, I really like the applicant to reconsider putting the parking behind the building, it seems to be something that's bothering a lot of people.
Absolutely.
And I just don't really see what the big deal would be to put the parking on the other side.
It looks nicer.
A couple, a couple of things that we talked about. Now, just bear in mind that CVS has been here for two years, so some of these issues have come up. I think the first one was, why put it in back, can we move this thing up to the road? Couple of things in the construction of a pharmacy lends itself to that the pharmacy is in the back. From a security and safety point of view, it's always in the back of the store. That a number of people that drive is where do you put the handicap parking and where is the entrance to the store? Because I had them swinging the store around, you know, which way and that way, so from pushing the store up to the front, to eliminate the front parking, is eliminating a lot of the people that use the handicap parking or use the pharmacy itself, because now they would have to park in the back. You don't want to put a back entrance into the store, again, from the safety and security of the pharmacy materials, so there's not a back door public entrance to the building. So if the entrance is up here, and the people are parking back there, it makes it difficult for them to drive to it, to get to the store, and that's one of the reasons why they're set up that way. Again, to the extent that you could swing the pharmacy around and put everything back, then you'd have the back end of the building on the road, and the loading dock and everything else. So it's, it's difficult to, with kind of those restrictions of moving the building around in certain formats on it.
You can certainly have the entrance on the side, have parking on the side.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, the side, like if it's on the side and.
Have the handicap parking on the side.
The handicap like closer to the entrance and then the other parking.
Well, the handicap is always by the entrance on it, but if you move it to the side, you only have one side rather than the two sides to get in, so then you have, where are you going to put the, where the remaining parking is put in is really inaccessible to the store.
Well, it's not inaccessible, it's just a short walk, but the handicap parking is right next to the doors.
Yeah. It, you know, something we need to look at and talk about again, but it's, there are some inherent issues with the way a pharmacy is structured on it.
Well, it just looks like another mall, if you have all the parking in front, you don't know what's in there, it just looks like another strip mall. And, you know, if you avoid that by moving it, pulling up to the front, it looks.
Yeah, what I would like is to be right up to the sidewalk, I'd like an entrance in the back, I like the pharmacy on the side, and the locking keys, so you have two entrances and parking. That's what I would like, but anyhow. So, my goal is really, let the public hearing go to the June meeting, close it then, allow 10 days for written comments in on it. With all that information and any updates that we have, and we should have some from DOT back and from our traffic consultant back, and so we should be able to walk through the seeker on a dry run, because it's going to be new for a number of people, to see what we have and not, and focusing on what issues are remaining. It doesn't prevent us from still making comments on the site plan, still talking about what trees, what's, what's the visual, what's the buffer, these types of things that still go with the site plan essence itself, and commenting on that, but I think that's kind of the layout of the timeframe that I'm looking at right now.
I feel like when throwing people the public comments, they keep the public comment period open until we do seeker, maybe we could keep it open until the next meeting.
Well, if I keep it open till the end of June, and I'm just pushing everything back, because if comments come in like June, then I may not be able to do seeker, because there's something needs to be done to address an issue that was raised. Not that it's, and I haven't, and the truth of the matter is, I think the issues, the major issues, and whether they're addressed specifically or not, are out there already. There is a section on visual, there is a section in seeker on noise, there is a section on air quality, we can address all those things in seeker, but again, we got to make sure we know what, basically the threshold levels of those things for longer. But, we will cover that, people have brought that up, and those, and there are questions in there that we have to be responsive to.
If you make a, if you do make a determination that the impact is not significant, and there is no information that comes to your attention, you can act upon that, rescind the next day, and take whatever action you deem appropriate at that point, up to the point where you grant approval. That's the point at which seeker becomes fixed. So if you find new information about wetlands or hydrology, and you say that is a significant impact, and that should be the subject of EIS, you can do that right up to the point that you, anytime before you make a subplan.
So in other words, if they started, it won't work here, but if they started digging a hole and came across some.
Gold.
Gold, I don't think. and came across some gold, I don't think, they'll stop and rescind the project. I was thinking about bones or artifacts or some, you know. And they had to stop because we have to do historical analysis? You can rescind the, because you hadn't done, you found something new on that. You wanna, you wanna talk about threshold levels a little bit or?
What I did was do an outline and give potential news. This may not be the thing people really wanna dwell on for them. But basically...
It's heavy, guys, I got.
It is, but what it is, there's four documents in there. One is the outline, which is one page. Next is the secret criteria of significance, which are two pages. And it's a whole bunch of stuff from the seeker handbook, or workbook, which is really useful because it takes you through the steps of the process of looking at the section one of EAF provides you with information. Taking that information, looking at it as a planning board in part two, which is that checklist that we frequently go through, and it says, "Traffic, is it going to be no impact, small impact, moderate after large impact?" But that's not the end of the analysis that you're going to do. When you've dealt with projects like Wilmeright or Wildberry, you can look and say, "Okay, this is going to have impacts. Let's just go positive and go on to the EIS review." If it is not clear, you have to go through this sort of triage. What you do is you look at the nature of the impacts, you look at the context of the impacts, you look at what of those impacts in that context are not impacts, small effects, moderate impacts, and large. And then if you determine there's moderate or large impacts, you go through the part three of EAF. And the part three is sort of like the essay test. This is multiple choice in part two, check the boxes, and only if you get to the last two boxes do you go to part three. Part three, you're looking at those issues and saying, "This is the nature of the impact, this is the context in which it happens, this is..." What you basically are getting to is an explanation of why you determined it to be a significant impact, that requires an EIS. Or even though it's a large impact, it's not significant to the point that it requires the EIS analysis. So you can have an impact, it can even be a larger impact. But based on the mitigation factors and based on the context, you may be able to determine that that's not something which requires the full 500-page supplements, EIS. Anybody not seen the Wilmeright EIS? I think the last time I looked in my office, about this big. It's got water studies, it's got traffic studies, it's got the economic analysis. There's a lot of information that goes into an EIS. And it may be a diversion of your time and resources to require it if you don't need to. So this is, in my opinion, this is one of those middle round ones. It's a shade of gray, and you'll decide if it's on the white side where you can negdeck it, considering whatever modifications are being proposed and acceptable and what the effect of those modifications are, or whether it's on the darker side and requires a positive because it does require extensive scrutiny of public participation.
Sometimes on a requirement of EIS is, it has multiple issues associated with it. Water, sewer, traffic, community char... So there are four or five or maybe even six different major issues. So when you have that many, you kind of fall back and say, "Let's do an EIS and then back on, to cover all of it." When there are one or two, you really wouldn't, you wouldn't really wanna focus on that. So you don't need all the other things that are associated with it, but you can ask all the questions you want on those one or two to get you satisfied whether it's done right or not. Or maybe, I shouldn't say done right, it gives you enough information to make a decision based on that.
That's, that's what you're looking at.
Okay, I know I kept you late and I heard a lot of information on it. Appreciate it, hanging in there. So I think our next meeting is June 9th. Lyle?
Congratulations, I won't be there.
I'll be out of town on that day. But I think, comment back to draft up the letter. We'll let you do at least the initial scribe and we'll send you back some comments. So you all got it in the mail just the other day, right? And even if you don't wanna editorialize it, if you have some suggestions you wanna put in and line or something like that.
Or delete, it's just...
Or delete. Get it? Or if you wanna stop in the shop, she's there. And, graduations. All right, we're trying to figure out the holidays that she has to work out, but keep you busy.
Calm for a while.
But see what you can get back, I'd like to get that out pretty quickly. And I will be working on that this week, but if you got comments, you know, talk to her or just send it to me if you want, which way. But I would like to get a letter from the board to CVS to talk about the issues that we're having with the design of the building and the character of the community.
But first, do we need a vote to this meeting, so?
Oh, I think, yes, okay. I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing on CVS due to June 9th meeting. And, like, checking. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'm against, just 'cause. I just, I'm against it, so, there, there you go. But we had a discussion, good.
Okay, and again, from my point of view is that...
I want to keep it open mind.
With the idea of close down and allow written comments and let us get on to secret determination. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Whoa, I apologize, it's late, it's really late.
It's true, good one.